The call to order the Wednesday, August 20th, regular meeting of the Chicopee School Committee. Please join me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
In compliance with open meeting law, we are right now recording and live broadcasting this meeting. Is anyone in the audience doing so? Seeing none, do we have any members of the school committee? It looks like we're all here in person. No one's joining us remotely. I have to just make that announcement to ask if anyone is joining us remotely as a member of the school committee. And at this time, I'd like to take a moment of silence. We'll take that moment of silence for all those who serve in the military and for all those who protect us. Thank you. Sarah, could I have a roll call of board attendants, please?
Mayor View?
Here.
Ms. Russo?
Here.
Mr. Barcello?
Present.
Mr. Douth?
Here.
Mrs. Perret?
Present.
Mrs. Schofield?
Here.
Mr. Brooks?
Here.
Mr. Lamoth?
Here.
Mr. Gerard?
Here.
Here.
Mr. Bernard?
Here.
Mrs. Loops?
Present.
Dr. McCarthy?
Present.
Twelve present.
Thank you. Public announcements by committee members. I'll start with my left to the vice chair, Don Lamoth.
I'll pass. Thank you.
And Sonny Brooks.
I would just like to welcome back students, staff, everybody involved with our school system, and also a special shout out to the custodians who take buildings that look like complete disrepair and make them look brand new when we start a new school year. So props to the young men and women who serve as our custodians. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Mark McCarthy?
Just welcome back and looking forward to another great school year.
And Susan Satella Loops.
And Grace Schofield.
And Doug Gerard.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. I too would like to welcome back all our staff and students. I know the freshmen started, I think, today over at Chicopee High School.
I'm sorry?
Did the freshmen?
Oh, no. Not yet.
All right.
I think they want their summer still.
Maybe it must be summer school pizza party or something I saw, but I would like just to welcome everybody back. Also, I'd like to thank our city councillor, Gary LeBrie, for bringing to our attention a diseased tree that was in a very highly walked area heading into Berry School. Great work by the DPW and our maintenance team. Dr. Ware, thank you for your help with this. The tree has been removed and everybody's going to be safe heading into the school year. So, thank you councillor LeBrie and everybody else involved.
Thank you, Doug. Sandra Perret?
Thank you. And just on a side note, we have on our desk today some Chicopee events in August. And coming up on August 23rd is the C3 Domino's Tournament to celebrate Hispanic Heritage with the C3 Domino's Tournament. There will be music, food trucks, and more from 1:00 to 7:00 at Wisniewski Park. And then on August 24th, there's a back-to-school event stated to join the Faded Barber Lounge for their fourth annual back-to-school event. There will be free haircuts, backpacks with school supplies, and much more. And this is from 11:00 to 3:00 on August 24th at Rivers Park. And then we also have a community meeting regarding the Anna Berry School, and that is Thursday, tomorrow, August 21st at 6:00 PM at Anna Berry School. So, just some interesting information for the public.
Thank you, Sandra. You stole my thunder. Thank you for that. Deanna Russo?
I just want to wish everyone a happy school year as we head into the kickoff next week. I hope everyone has much success and health in the next school year.
And Jay Dow?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to take a minute and congratulate Adam Tangaway for his efforts with Camp Elevate over the summer. I know I had spoke previously. You know, my daughter had the opportunity to attend Camp Elevate, and I feel although I wasn't there, you know, just the way that she spoke about the program and the balance of academics and just free time and everything and the way that they were able to balance that was a huge success. So, a huge congratulations to Adam Tangaway and the entire team that helped to put Camp Elevate together. Also, just want to take a minute since it's in Ward 3 and just say we had a very successful national night out once again at Sarajean Park. Over 120 vendors. You know, I think we'll wait and see if we win any awards this year, Mayor, but you know, I think we're all in agreement that that night continues to grow and grow, you know, and it's such an amazing thing to just see and see all the vendors interacting with all the public. The back-to-school event, again, I just wanted to touch base on it again, you know, the amazing things that happened there. Haircuts, braids, manicures, facials, free backpacks and school supplies, different community resources, you know, that's a big thing that we're able to do, you know, that our students are able to experience and really being able to come into the school year on the highest of highs and looking good and being ready for the school year is a big thing. So, if you have the opportunity Sunday, August 24th, 11:00 to 3:00 at Rivers Park, it'll be a great event. Thank you.
Thank you, Jay. Ron Bernard?
All set. Thank you, Mayor.
And thank you. And David Barcello?
Yes, I'm all set, Mayor. Thank you.
Sure. And I'll just take a moment too to recognize the new teacher orientation this morning. It was amazing to see 65, Dr. Ware, 65 new teachers joining our district. Excited for them and this wonderful opportunity to mold minds, and I was hopeful that I was able to give at least a little bit of inspiration to them and telling them to be that teacher, you know, the one that everyone wants on their syllabus. And don't be that teacher that everyone dreads getting on the syllabus is really the message that I had for them today. And you know, when you're passionate about what you do, you don't really work. So, I could see that they were really motivated and excited. You could feel the vibe in the room and under the leadership of Dr. Marcus Ware. I'm excited about the new school year. On that note, I'll turn it over to the superintendent.
Thank you, Mayor. I definitely echo the sentiments on the new educator training. And just so we won't miss anyone, it is teachers, it's also paras, as well as other people who serve in the classroom profession. But everyone there this morning was in good spirits and energy. It's 65 and counting because I don't want to discount the efforts going on in the HR office right now. We are still processing paperwork to get people in front of our students for this upcoming school year. So, we have convocation on Monday. That's our kickoff event at Bellamy Middle School. So, we're looking forward to seeing all staff from all 15 buildings there on Monday, and school committee clearly is invited. And that begins at 8:00 AM at Bellamy Middle School. And then the first day of school is August 28th. So, that's next Thursday. So, we are a week and one day out for grades 1 through 12 returning to school and then pre-K and K return after Labor Day. I don't know if that was intentional, but it rhymes. So, we have the little ones that come in after Labor Day. And last but not least, I just want to say thank you to all the departments that put in to what Mr. Douth and others have said, that when it came to the kindergarten kickoff event the other night, it was incredible. All the way from the bus where little ones got to experience the bus to see what seats looked like, all the way to the police department who were there, supporting the community, as well as the food trucks that were there. So, it was a great event, and I just want to give a shout out to Kelly Hurley and I'm going to forget her name right now because I can't forget, but our family community department that really did an awesome job in pulling this event off for the community.
Thank you, Dr. Ware. Now, we'll step into our public inputs. And public input, speakers shall identify themselves by providing their name and address. There is a 30-minute limit to public input, three minutes per speaker. Topics for discussion will be limited to those items within the school committee's scope of authority. We have one person signed up for public input. That is John. And John, I'm sorry, can't read your handwriting. John Wibley. Welcome, John. Would you like to come up to one of the microphones?
Well, what we're trying to do this year is, last year, as you might remember, we had a student from Berlin, Germany come to our house. Both of you guys helped us out, the superintendent and you, the mayor. Come November of that year, our house was flooded. So, the student could no longer stay in our house. She had, after about two or three weeks, she had to leave. So, now we have another student from Italy. Now, my understanding is there has not been a great deal of students that have come from other countries. Now, I was an adjunct professor, I shouldn't say an adjunct professor, but I was teaching at Chicopee Public, at Bellamy School. And there was five or six students who couldn't understand English. I don't know where they came from. And now I got a girl here from Italy, and I was told June 20th was the deadline. I didn't know that. The superintendent last year said to me, it was just a date. And here we are today. I had to come back to get an incredible student who's ready to come this week from Italy to here. And I've been fighting with a number of people. You've been wonderful. I haven't spoken to you, Superintendent. And so, I'm a little bit dismayed. And so, we'd like to just get this approved. All I need is superintendent to sign it because the principal wouldn't sign it without your permission. And I don't understand what's holding this back. I don't think you've had any other students from other countries. Do you? Have you? I mean, Superintendent, have you had another student from another country?
John, just a point of reference, we're not going to have dialogue back.
Okay.
Allowed to speak at public input about the topic.
That's the topic.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes public input. Visitors?
Update on Berry School building project. Mr. Bert Gardner from Kelo and Beaneck Associates. Bert, I'll turn it over to you.
Welcome, Bert.
Thank you. Thank you, Superintendent Mayor. And all of you, thank you for the invite tonight. We appreciate the opportunity to bring you back up to speed on the project. It's been a little while since we talked to you, but I've got a presentation this evening that should hopefully get you up to speed at where we are in the process right now. So, actually, we'll see if we can get the presentation up on the screen. Can you put it in presentation mode from the booth there? If I were younger, I'd know how to use the flicker better. There we go. Thank you. How about if I just say next slide? There we go. Okay. So, last time I was here, we were in the preliminary design program phase of the study. The study's in two parts. Right now, we're in the preferred schematic report, which is the second piece of the study. On July 23rd, we submitted the PDP, the Preliminary Design Program, to the MSBA for their review. That's currently in their hands right now, being reviewed. The document was over 3,000 pages, so it takes them a little time to get through and offer feedback to what they read in our findings. But they will eventually send us comments. They'll have some questions, and we'll work with the district to make sure that their questions get answered and addressed. In the PDP, however, we looked at two different sites, and we studied 12 design alternatives. You can kind of see, there were four that were developed right at the Berry Elementary School site where the existing school is. One is a base repair option that's required by MSBA for all projects. They also require you to look at an addition renovation option, so that's A2. And then A3 and A4 were new construction options. One was a two-story and one was a three-story. And then we moved over to the Zatella site. I don't know if people recall, but we rediscovered wetlands at Garrity Grove that can't be developed on and within certain buffers, which really forced the developable land at that site to the eastern side of the site along Peter Street. And that will displace some of the park amenities, which would have to be replicated as part of the project. And as you all knew going into the project, Garrity Grove is protected by Article 97. So, there's a whole legislative process that we have to go through if we develop a school on that site with the state legislature with input from the local delegation here. It's something that we're prepared to assist the city on, but we are kind of at the mercy of the state's timeline for that. So, we anticipate that would add time to the overall project schedule. So, moving over to the Zatella site, as we studied several options to kind of come up with Zatella as the best option to look at and really exhausted all the other possibilities working with the planning board and other city stakeholders. But at Zatella, we looked at four Berry-only sites. So, those are four design alternatives that could support just the Berry program as if it was being built at the Garrity Grove site. We also looked at a base repair option for the Zatella school, and that's because there is a request that if we're going to look at the Zatella site, that school building's similar age to the Berry Elementary School and has similar challenges that that school faces. So, eventually, something's going to have to be done to upgrade that school too. And we just wanted to include the potential of what it would look like if we could take advantage of correcting issues in two schools with one project. So, then, once we do the base repair on the Zatella site or the Zatella building, we looked at two ad-reno projects to combine the two schools and one new construction option to combine the two school populations. Next slide. There we go. So, to assist the city and the school department in evaluating these 12 options, we looked carefully through their educational program, through their visioning notes, and through notes received during community feedback sessions. And we came up with what we call key elements to support the project. Those are kind of summarized right here, but the long and short is that we used these and kind of identified how well each design alternative responds to each one of the items on the list, and so that it can be just kind of summarized graphically in a pie chart for each option. Next slide. Whoop. I went too far. Okay. So, as we move into the preferred schematic report, MSBA requires us to identify which options we're going to further develop and evaluate until we eventually narrow it down to one option at the end of this phase. The four options that we looked at were A2, which was the ad-reno option at Garrity Grove at the existing school site, A4, which is a new building at the Garrity Grove site, B3 is a new building that supports only the Berry Elementary School students at Zatella, and then D3 is a new building that would support both the Zatella and the Berry Elementary School students in one school. So, now I'll kind of walk you through briefly each one of these design alternatives. Over at the Garrity Grove, the existing site, we retained the gymnasium and cafeteria portion of the original building, as well as kind of the area where the main office and the entrance school is right now. As you can see on the pie chart, we've got 82% of the project key elements have been supported in this. It keeps the school in its current location, which is, you know, what the city was kind of thinking they were getting into right from the start, which is a good thing. When we take down the Berry Elementary School as part of this project or the portion that's not being retained, MSBA's grant will cover the cost for their eligible portion of that cost. Because we're saving some of the building, we're reducing our carbon footprint by not having to rebuild stuff you already own in the city. And actually, the orientation works out pretty well for solar, and it's a pretty compact building, so your energy usage should be efficient. On the downside, as I mentioned, we've got Article 97 that we have to deal with. There will be a land swap. So, what we would propose doing is just taking enough land for the school and the parking and your outdoor amenities, and then retaining as much of Garrity Grove Park as we can, because the city will have to designate other land in the city as protected open space in perpetuity. So, once it's dedicated to that, it can't be changed without, again, going through the Article 97 action. There are some potential added city scope to both sites. At this site, it's really pretty much land acquisition, whether it be for properties so that we can gain access and be able to develop the eastern portion of the site the way we show it. And there's also, you know, possibly sidewalk improvements and things like that that might be required. Any of that added city scope in both projects is not eligible under the MSBA grant, which is one of the reasons we listed as a con. And then this building, because we're retaining the existing gym, and I think we all know that there's five levels in your two-story school right now, even though we've improved that, you still have three levels for a two-story school because the gymnasium is up higher than the second floor level of the existing Berry School classrooms. So, we've got to kind of bump right in the middle of the program space that presents challenges. In all of the options, what we've done for the organization is that we've created academic neighborhoods. Each neighborhood consists of two grade levels, and each grade level consists of three general classrooms, a special education classroom, and then a single resource room that's shared between the two grade levels. These are always kind of tucked off in their own wings, as you'll see in the next slide, as an organizational strategy to make sure you can share the building. But the last thing on this slide to show, I guess, is that we've got dedicated entrances for your pre-K and family center, the main entrance to the school, and then the nurse. And not every option right now is, the nurse isn't organized to allow that entrance, but the goal is whatever design alternative that we push forward on this, ultimately, the nurse will have a dedicated entrance. It's just a matter of shuffling spaces. For community use and security, what we always do is we zone the building so that there's a portion that's available after hours while the academic and private zones of the building or any service areas or administrative areas can be easily isolated just through your building hardware and access control systems. This allows the building to be opened up after hours, and you don't really have to worry about people wandering into areas of the building that they shouldn't be. The publicly shared spaces in the school right now, we're looking at the media center, the family community center, and the gym and the cafeteria. So, all those spaces would be within the blue shaded areas in the slides. Wherever you see the little red octagon stop sign, that means that those are where we'd have security doors to keep people out of the areas you shouldn't be in. And conveniently, you know, today's day and age with lockdowns, those would also be security points where the push of a single duress button would close and lock those doors during the school day. The next option we looked at at Garrity Grove is a new school. One of the primary benefits of this option over the previous one is that we really simplify the phasing. When we phased the project with an ad-reno, we've got to create swing space that kids can move into temporarily so that we can get into the original building and do the construction and renovation in that area. and renovation in that area. So this really significantly cuts down on the phasing. We can build this whole school while students remain in Berry Elementary School in their building, and then, once the school's completed, the students would move into the new building, and the contractor would kind of shift sides of the site to take down the old school. Again, we've got Article 97, potential added city scope, but this option actually improves our solar orientation slightly for the classroom wing, which is two stories in this scheme, and is kind of the angled bar at the bottom, the boomerang-shaped bar at the bottom of the plan. Just like the other levels, we've got organization of the building into separate academic wings. Again, in all the schemes, the academic wings and the classrooms that are provided are the same, with four classrooms per grade and a shared resource room. Main entrance is here again, is dedicating, can be opened up, and we've also got a dedicated pre-K entrance on this plan. And as I mentioned, we could shuffle things around in the nurses' suite to make sure that there was a dedicated entrance for the nurse, too, which is a priority for the school, because the students don't have to kind of walk all the way through the building to be picked up, and parents don't have to walk through either. You don't have to check them in and give them a pass. They can just kind of wait, and the best of you will, the nurse will bring the student to them, and they can be easily dismissed if necessary. Similar to the other schemes, we've got publicly shared zone for this option, as well as academic and private zone areas, service and admin, all easily isolated after hours. This moves us over to the Zatella site. Now, the first option we looked at here was a Berry-only option. Basically, it again eliminates really complicated phasing, because the students in Zatella and the students in Berry just remain in their classrooms as the new building is constructed. Once the new building is constructed, the Berry students would move over to this location, and the contractor would finish up parking and things like that on this site. One of the cons to this site is because we've moved off of Garrity. The Garrity Grove site demolition of the existing Berry school is not covered by the MSBA. They only cover the grant for the site that the project is located on or construction costs. So demolition of that building would become an ineligible cost with the grant. This, though, gives us the opportunity to site the building. If we do pursue this one, the solar orientation is not ideal, but our office is, you know, currently in the process of tweaking this plan so that we can improve the solar orientation of this scheme. And then it would be, you know, more ideal and better for efficiency and energy efficiency. Once we moved over to Zatella, you can see that we've jumped up to 88% of the key elements being supported for the project. Organization remains the same. The difference in this scheme is that we've got three stories. So, your oldest students, grades four and five, would be on the third floor, and then progressively, as you go down, the student age gets younger, so that your youngest students, kindergarten and first grade, don't have to travel, navigate stairs, don't have to travel as far to get to their specials, to gym, and to lunch. This option also has a dedicated main entrance, dedicated pre-K entrance, and again, we could work at trying to get a dedicated entrance for the nurses' suite. Just like the other options, the building again is zoned to make sure that there's no access to the admin areas, service areas, or the academic wing of the building. And then that brings us to the last option we're looking at, which is a new building on the Zatella site. This would consolidate both the Zatella students and the Berry Elementary School students. Because it's on the same site, if we took down the Zatella school, the existing, that would be covered by the grant, I believe. Again, it's 88% of the key elements for the project have been supported in this. It's got optimal solar orientation. On the downside for both of the Zatella sites is that there's significant neighborhood opposition that we're looking at. There are concerns, but we're looking into solutions for those, or at least a response to the concerns. Primarily, the concerns are around school safety and the high-traffic volume and the speeds that the cars travel on Granby Road. And I also heard feedback from the community that sometimes in a bad storm, people get backups in their houses. So, both of those, though, a school project is, you know, in our experience as designers, school projects are often a catalyst or an opportunity for municipalities or different communities to address longstanding issues that otherwise would probably be still talked about, you know, five or 10 years from now. So, while it's a con, and we certainly understand the concerns, you know, as a more objective view on the subject, having done a lot of schools in different communities, I can say it's also an opportunity. So, you shouldn't just dismiss the Zatella site, but it should be considered. And again, our office is kind of indifferent to where we designed the building. We're here as your partner. We're willing to support whatever site is moved forward, and we look forward to an exciting school project. This, again, is a little bit different. Our K to five classroom wings are the same as I've described, with two grade levels per academic neighborhood, same number of classrooms, four total, which includes a special ed room. But the first floor in this option is dedicated pretty much to the common program areas, like your cafeteria and gym, and then the preschool, so that we don't have the very youngest students, three-years-old, trying to navigate stairs, which they currently do with the Zatella building. You've got a two-story school there. So hopefully, that's a bit of an improvement. You'll have dedicated entrances for the pre-K. You'll have dedicated main office entrance for both the pre-K and for the K to five students. And we would also work to get the nurses' suite a dedicated outside door. In all the schemes, we try to locate the nurse on an outside wall, so that we can eventually get to that point, if it's an option that's pursued. The zoning is very similar, again, where we have the community shared spaces available after hours, but easily isolating the more academic or private zones, as well as your service and administrative areas in the building. And that's where we're at. If there are any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Any questions we'll take through the chair. Dr. Mark McCarthy.
You may have covered this in the past, but please refresh my memory here. What's the timeline on the Article 97 things in terms of getting state legislature involvement?
I would, we're estimating it'll add about a year to the project to go through the process, but it really kind of depends on where we get, when we get into the project, and I think in what their schedule is. I can say that we cannot enter the Article 97 process until the end of this phase, because in our discussions with the EEA's office, who kind of oversees this whole process, we can't bring possible solutions to them. We have to bring the solution that the city's interested in pursuing. So we're going to have to be able to identify what the solution is, what the alternative land is that we're looking at swapping, and really have a pretty well-defined plan before we go to them. But at the end of this phase, we anticipate submitting something to their portal if the Garrity Grove site is selected.
Thank you.
Thank you. Just a point of information to Dr. McCarthy is that the delegates that represent Chicopee, all six of them have been informed of the necessity, if that were the option that's chosen, that they're on board with helping us move that process along. So I just wanted to share that with you as well, and the viewing audience. Anything else from Dr. McCarthy? Vice Chair Don Lamoff.
Yes, I've listened to the proposals, and if, for some reason, we were to end up going to Zatella, I would implore the school committee and the superintendent to consider redistricting and take the preschool out of that building and construct that building K through five, and take basically Belcher and put it in there, so that it's same-age-type students in the building, and the preschool would be out of the building in another separate building. Just before you get to the point where it's too late, I would like to put that on everybody's mind. I would prefer the Berry site myself, but I see the opportunity for Zatella, and if that's the site that's chosen, I would like to see it as a K through five school, not a preschool. And I would like to see the staffs merged, so that you don't have two principals, two administrative staffs, one building. Thank you.
Deanna Russo.
Yeah, I just wanted to know what next steps were at this point. I know the community meeting is tomorrow, where I assume something very similar will be shared with the community, but what happens after that?
Yeah, tomorrow's nice presentation is essentially the same. I've got a couple extra slides just to drill down a little bit more to their concerns that have been provided at previous outreaches. But the next steps is that we're developing the plans, you know, a little bit every day, with the goal of getting all four of these design options to our cost estimator in early September. It takes them about a month to turn around numbers, so that we can get updated costs for these projects, for these four options. And then, the city has to, within the month of September, we'll be working with the city to decide which option is the one that you want to pursue as your preferred option, and that's what this half of the study ultimately is supposed to conclude with, is a recommendation to move forward with just one of these four options. At that point, again, it gets submitted to MSBA. They have their opportunity to comment on it. We actually do a presentation to MSBA on the preferred option to a special subcommittee of theirs, which, you know, reviews hundreds of schools and just kind of gives us feedback based on, you know, their library and wealth of information that they've gathered over the years doing this, so that, you know, sometimes they see things to improve that haven't been considered yet. So, that's an opportunity to look at that kind of thing. And they'll establish, at that point, if everything goes well, MSBA's board will vote to approve this project to move into schematic design. And that's when we really start talking about the details of what's happening in the classrooms. What do you need for furniture? You know, we get a lot more into that kind of a discussion. What's the maintenance cost? You know, what are the procedures? What's the tolerance for landscaping? You know, what's the budget? You know, things like that all happen in schematic design. That rolls into a phase called design development. At the end of schematic design, actually, the MSBA will work with the city and develop, they'll establish your project's open budget agreement, and that's basically where MSBA says, okay, we've agreed that this is the scope. At the end of schematic design, we've got what you're saying it's going to cost, and this is what we're going to participate as part of the grant. So all that'll be defined at that phase, and then we move into the design development, which is really just tying up any last details that haven't been discussed during schematic design. And from there, we move right into the construction documents. And the construction documents will take anywhere from, you know, three-quarters of a year to a year to kind of get through. And then we bid the project and move into construction.
Okay.
So, the whole process is fairly long. I think that I looked at it the other day, because just making sure that if we go Article 97, that one year is not going to hurt us. One of the options we're looking at right now is ground source heat pumps, which are geothermal wells. And there's federal incentives to help support the upfront cost of those. And they're still, even though there have been a lot of cuts in federal funding with the current administration, that grant is still available for geothermal wells until 2032. So I want to make sure we're through and occupied by 2032, and we'll, I'm anticipating like around 2030, 2031, maybe, we would be moving into the building.
That's helpful.
That's the next step.
Thank you. There's a lot of next steps and a lot of opportunities. Appreciate that. Just having attended the last, one of the last community meetings, there was a lot of questions surrounding traffic studies. I know that one of the cons was listed with specifically the traffic, but just was curious if that has happened, and if not, at what phase that would happen.
So, the traffic study is typically part of our schematic design phase, so it would not have happened yet. However, because of the community feedback, I've reached out to our traffic engineers, and I've discussed it with the school department and with the building commission about moving that into this phase. So we've had our discussions with the building commission, but it wasn't on the agenda specifically for a vote. So, the next building committee meeting, which is Thursday next week, we're going to vote on moving that study into this phase. Really, we can't do the study till the kids get back anyways, so that will be after that vote, and our traffic engineers are prepared to kind of hit the ground running. They know that they've got about a month to turn it around. And I know there's been some detailed questions about what it includes. It's really just one day of counting, and then they do a lot of research on data that's available publicly, as far as accidents and, you know, traffic volumes. But they study the peak traffic volumes for one day, and we want to make sure it's a day that all the students are there. So, and then they'll come up with it. One other thing that's not typically part of a traffic study, the study usually just identifies what the current conditions are, what the impact of a new school would be on it, and what the potential challenges associated with that would be. But we've asked, in this case, to also give us a couple of potential solutions to address any issues that are discovered, so that the city really has all the tools that they need to evaluate whether or not that's a showstopper for Zatella or not. And we really need the information before we can recommend a preferred solution at the end of this phase, so.
Thanks for working to pull that forward.
All set?
Yeah, I'm all set.
Susan Zatella, Loeb.
Thank you, Mr. Gardner, for responding to an email I sent you on behalf of many families in the Granby or Zatella school neighborhood. It was concerning mostly the traffic and other concerns on behalf of these particular families, again. So you answered the email very comprehensively and put a lot of thought into it, and you did say it was only one-day traffic study?
It's only one day, yeah.
That's discouraging, or I live off of Granby Road, so I know it's a busy road.
So, can you tell me what a busy day is on Granby Road? I can sway which day that is. So if there's like a particular day, like, you know, Tuesdays, forget it. If you want to get out of, you know, turn on, you know, if you had a day and you could give me that information, I could influence what day our team is out there.
Okay. I stay in close contact with three women in particular, and I believe they might be here tonight, or we'll see them tomorrow evening, but I know Mary's here tonight, I believe. But yeah, I'm going to ask all of them, and we'll stay in contact with you, because, again, you were very helpful.
Great.
So thank you for that.
All set, Susan? Sandra Perret.
Based on the traffic study, would that determine a change in the entrance to the area?
Probably would not change the entrance, because we're either going to go down Maisick Drive, or what we're going to do is, we've been proposing in the plans, and kind of go through the, that one property that would have to be acquired. The idea of taking school traffic out of the neighborhood street is preferred, just as a school planner. It also, Edgewood is across the street from that property, so if one of the solutions is a traffic light, that could help both the neighborhood across the street get out and the school. So, we'd probably keep it, unless something comes up in the traffic study, and as an architect, that's kind of beyond my comprehension. I can follow along with what they're saying, but they kind of, as the experts, will guide me there. So if they come up with something that I haven't considered, as a building designer, we would certainly consider it. If they said, you know what, that doesn't make sense. We should be looking at Maisick or some other avenue into the property.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? I want to thank Bert Gardner from Calo and Benick for that presentation. Thank you.
All right. Thank you again. I appreciate your time.
Yeah, Don Lamoff.
I'd like to take 25-8-20 out of order and take it first.
Let's have a motion to take 25-8-20, the approval of applications for foreign exchange students, out of order, and take that next. On the agenda, I need a discussion. Seeing none, all in favor? Aye. Anyone opposed? Motion carries unanimously. 25-8-20.
Approval of applications for foreign exchange students.
We need a motion. Don, can I get a motion?
Motion to approve the application of foreign exchange students.
I have a motion to approve the application for foreign exchange students. On the motion. Discussion, Don.
Yes, what's this going to cost us as a city, and how many would we want to approve? Meaning, is this going to be open-ended? Is it going to be like one or two, or 10, or 20, or, you know? Because I know, further in our agenda, we talk about out-of-city for employees, and we said pretty much no to that, so that's why I'm asking.
Absolutely.
That's it.
Superintendent.
Thank you, Mayor. And so, what I can do is, Mr. Lamoff, I'll attempt to answer the question and back up a little bit, because I want the school committee to know where all this is coming from. So, previously, in the year, a year ago, there was a foreign exchange student application put forth. At that time, it wasn't, it wasn't clear to me that there was a policy on the books, that actually the school committee needed to vote on any exchange students. So, the information that you were presenting to this evening by Mr. Whibley is accurate, that he did come to the mayor's that he did come to the mayor's office, he did come to my office, go through my office, and we entertained the application of a student in the previous year. So when that information hit, was communicated to you this evening, that is accurate. Fast forward a year, we are, we are here tonight because of what the policy J-7 actually states. And I'm going to read it into the record so that the viewing public knows where it's coming from. So it says, "A mission of foreign exchange students, foreign exchange students planning to attend Chickaby Public Schools should apply to the targeted school no longer than June 20th of the school year prior to their attendance. Such applications should include all grade transcripts, medical records, immunizations, and other pertinent information, and should be submitted to the building principal. The building principal shall make a recommendation to the superintendent, who shall bring forth all requests to the school committee, and shall make a recommendation to the school committee for acceptance of and waiver of tuition. All approved requests will be forwarded to the Assistant for Superintendent for Curriculum Instruction for processing of necessary immigration forms." So that is the policy that's on the books. So what you have this evening, the reason why it's on the agenda, as well as communicated to Mr. Whibley and as well as another family who was actually petitioning to take on a foreign exchange student, is because it does need to go through your approval through a vote. And to Mr. Lamath's question, yes, it would actually require your acceptance of waiving the tuition as the state will not reimburse any students that we accept through the exchange program. So what I can also offer you is that the information that I'd like the school committee to know and the viewing public, along with Mr. Whibley and another family, is that we have a student application from Germany, and the reason why you don't have any packets is to protect the security and safety of student information, so you do not see that in your packets. And one from, so there are two students from Germany. One's through an organization called the International Exchange Services, and another is from the Council on International Education Exchange. Both of these applications came in on July 29th. This is why you're just learning of it this evening, because we only had one school committee meeting in the month of July, and we have one again this evening. Once we got the information, I would like to give credit to Sarah Hoare, my assistant, who actually communicated with Mr. Whibley, as well as the organizations who were communicating with us, to let them know that this needed to go onto the agenda to make the, to turn into a formal vote. At this time, I will say that now that I recognize there's a policy and I recognize that last year was my out-of-step, I cannot make the recommendation moving forward because to Mr. Lamath's point, I know that we had a conversation about another topic that's not on the agenda tonight, so I will speak to it. However, I do think that when we talk about the conversation about entertaining exchange students, I think it's a great opportunity to do so. I think that the policy on the books allows for the teams, whether it's high school, middle school, or elementary school, to look into the students, make sure we communicate fully and outright with the organization who's communicating with us, as well as make preparations accord, in accordance to that. One of the things that I would like the school committee and the viewing public to know is that exchange students are not taken any differently to any students that have not come through the Chickaby Public School system. So although you may receive a record that says, oh, this is a great student, the one thing that I would like to offer my expertise here is, in my previous roles, is that when you take an exchange student, you also consider the social, emotional, and well-being, the cultural exchange piece of it, and then you work with your counselors to actually not only work with the organization, but also work with the incumbent family to make sure that it is a good fit. So with the time crunch that is presented this evening, I'm not to blow it out of the water because it is your decision. I just want to let you know from my recommendation standpoint, it's not due to cost, it's due to the actual timeline, that I would love to entertain it in the future, but for this, for a specific evening, I do not make the recommendation that we accept students at this time.
Any other discussion or comments? Jay Dought.
Yeah, I guess I don't really know who I'm necessarily asking this question to, but understanding that, you know, foreign exchange students and that we're not reimbursed for them, what sort of supports would need to come into place in order to successfully support a foreign exchange student in our classrooms? Would there need to be additional supports? And, I mean, if we're not getting reimbursed for that, like, obviously, it's not a question that I don't think can be answered right now, but what is the cost that's going to be associated with the need for additional supports?
I can attempt to answer that. Thank you, Mayor. And so what I will say is that's the actual price point. I do not have in numbers because a lot of that would come through, for example, when you are taking in a foreign exchange student, you're checking for cultural connections, right? And especially through language. So even though there's a testing score that shows functional language, we would work through Cindy Shaunigle's office, as well as the Office for Curriculum Accountability, to actually do our own batteries, to make sure that there is a conversion that's acceptable. So those are the things that you can't, I can't measure right now, but it would cost, you know, person hours, right, to get behind it. And so that would equate to something, but we haven't done that, and that's why I think the timeline's in place. So that when you have a student coming in before the June 20th deadline, you actually use the summer, you use your resources to actually work with the organization so that you actually could figure out if the student is a good fit or not. It's not just about the fit in the household, it's about fit at the school as well.
Thank you. Sandra Perret.
And there is no support from the International Exchange Student Committee for, and the, I don't recall the name of the company.
Yeah.
The two international exchange organizations that the student is being supported by, they're not being supported financially to us, correct?
Not to us, correct.
Okay. And, I mean, while I do support the thought of having international students, it can only benefit the student as well as the entire student body, but it's something that needs to be prepared for in advance and not at a final hour, so to speak. So thank you for your information.
Are you all set?
Yes, thank you.
Don Lamath.
So I just want to make sure I heard you correctly. There's three that are trying to come in.
Two. There was one from last year, I just gave some context for, two this year. That both came in on July 29th.
And an average cost of a student is around between $11,000 and $15,000.
I think a little bit more than that. I think it's about 19.
19?
Chickaby spends about 19.
So you're talking $40,000. Thank you.
Susan Satella.
So our district needed those five extra weeks to prepare, and because we don't have those five extra weeks, that's the reason why you're recommending that we don't approve this.
Correct, Ms. Loops. And the preparation is not just about for the students, about working with the organization, working with the actual schools so that we actually make sure that the fit is seamless. So it's very similar to when we take a student that's not international, because when they're not in our district, they're not our students, so we have to do our due diligence to make sure that we put the proper supports in place. So that's why that timeline is in place.
I understand. Thank you.
No problem.
Any other? Deanna.
Yeah, not to go back, and it seems like we didn't vet this in the past, but just wanted to understand, we didn't, meaning school committee didn't approve. But in the past, or last year, did we have the proper time period? Did this vetting occur then either?
No. Last year, that timeline was August when this happened.
So I'm just trying to understand what's the root cause of that? Is it just the timing of the organization?
It's the timing of the organization, correct. And I would speak more to it. I think is that it depends on the organization. There are many organizations that exist that offer exchange programs for students. And so they, in working with a district, you would actually inquire about what the timeline is and not just say, we have a student, here you go. Unfortunately, that, maybe other districts work that way, but since we have a policy on the books, that's why the timeline's in place.
Got it. And so the ideal state is for the student to start at the beginning of the school year, I'm assuming. Is there any situation where our vetting could happen, they would start later into the school year? Or is it, is it just the one option of having them start, you know, when all other students come in?
So with the way the policy is written, and I actually spoke with Attorney Bouchard about this, it actually, it would behoove the students to come in for the full year. So that's what the argument would be. We actually did have an organization reach out, I was looking through my email, in the middle of the winter last year, and we told them the policy, and they said they would wait. So they were told, we don't accept mid-year because of the same fact that we would actually need, not only need the time, but if we're going to give a student exchange experience, we want to give them for the full year.
Yeah, okay. I was just really asking for these two students for this year to see if we needed the five weeks to vet. Could they start a few weeks later? But it sounds like our policy is.
It is.
Start at the beginning of the year.
Correct.
Okay. And the vetting really is not only just for that foreign exchange student and vetting the programs themselves, but also making sure it's a good fit for our larger student population, I would assume as well.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Any other question or discussion? Seeing none, we have a motion to approve the applications for foreign exchange students, and we'll take a roll call.
Mr. Barcello?
Yes.
Mr. Dought?
No.
Mrs. Perret?
No.
Mrs. Scofield?
No.
Mr. Brooks?
No.
Mr. Lamath?
No.
Mr. Gerard?
No.
Mr. Bernard?
Yes.
Mrs. Loops?
No.
Dr. McCarthy? May review?
No.
Ms. Russo?
No.
Two yes, 10 no.
So the applications for foreign exchange students has been denied. Move on with the agenda. Approval of minutes, 25-8-1.
Move that the minutes of the regular meeting of the school committee held on July 9th, 2025, be approved.
Don, can I get a motion?
Motion to approve.
Have a motion to approve the minutes. Any discussion on the minutes? Seeing none, all in favor? Aye. Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Reports 25-8-2.
Report on personnel action taken in professional development. I'd like to call Ms. Deb Green up to the podium for an update from the Human Resources
Good evening, everyone. Your report from July 2nd to August 12th includes 108 new hires. Forty-nine of those are in Unit A, teachers and speech therapists, and those, 29 of those are in Unit E, are paraprofessionals and assistant teachers. We also added two vice principals, or not added, but replaced. There are 23 resignations and two retirements. We also added 10 positions to our substitute pool, seven cafeteria workers, one nurse, and one maintenance. In addition, there were six non-union hires. Those are our office assistants, our safety and security personnel, et cetera. Postings on Power School, today we have 78 active postings. Thirty-five of those are Unit A positions, 10 of those in special ed. Nine of those are our itinerant staff, our SLPAs, our speech therapists, our physical therapists, et cetera. We have 17 pairs or assistant teacher postings, nine of those are in special education, and three of those are assistant teachers. In addition, there are two behavior techs posted. Also, we have eight food service positions available and two custodial positions. And as always, our substitute posting, crossing guards, noon attendants, those are always open and posted. Thank you.
Thank you. Sandra Perret.
We have a listing of about 54 various staff who attended several education programs with titles such as the Massachusetts State Administrators Association Annual Conference, the Western Mass Bed Director Summer Conference, the Mass Urban Project, the Pediatric Health Assessment Summer School for School Nurses and Healthcare Providers, Instructional Leadership Institute, the Massachusetts Association of Vocational Administrators Planning Retreat, and Safety Care Training. Most of these, a good portion of these were virtual, and there were several that were in another part of Massachusetts, Plymouth and Falmouth. So a lot was going on this past month.
Thank you. Any other discussion or comments? Dr. Ware.
At this time, I'd like to read the two retirees that we have on the agenda. The first one is Mr. William Reed, our crossing guard, who was a crossing guard for three years and 11 months of service. The Transportation Department writes, "For almost four years, Bill has been out there every morning and afternoon making sure our kids cross safely. In the heat, in the cold, in the rain, and even on those freezing snowy days, he has been a friendly face. He is going to be missed. We wish him a retirement. The best in his retirement." Last but not least, we have Ms. Patricia Sicari, Special Education Paraprofessional at Bowie School, 25 years, eight months of service. "After an exceptional 25 years and eight months of dedicated service, Patricia Sicari is retiring from her position as elementary paraprofessional, marking the end of an era defined by care, consistency, and compassion. Throughout the years, especially known as Trish, has quietly supported student success, offering patience, encouragement, and a steady hand to both learners and teachers alike. Though we will deeply miss her warmth and expertise, we rejoice in knowing that Trish can now embrace a well-deserved rest, joy, and new adventures ahead of, with our family. Thank you, Trish, for all your remarkable years of service." Congratulations to both of our retirees.
Yes, congratulations to both of our retirees. Any discussion or comments? 25-8-3.
Report from the Superintendent's Evaluation Subcommittee, presentation by Dr. Marcus Ware, and the report is attached.
Point of information, I don't think, I think we're on 25-8-3.
We're on Policy and Human Resource Subcommittee. Did I not say that?
My apologies. I thought we said that.
Did I say that? No, we skipped it.
Did?
I skipped it.
Oh, I thought I did.
No, Mayor, it's me. Report from the Policy and Human Resources Subcommittee.
I'll defer to the chair. Who's the chair?
Well, I thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd love to talk about that meeting.
All right, great.
So the Policy and Human Resources Subcommittee did meet on Monday, July 28th. Topics discussed at the meeting included the graduation policy and the need to add U.S. history to competency determination. We also discussed the possibility of what is considered a passing grade and how if we were to move that bar, how it would affect our current high school students. As previously alluded to, we discussed the admission policy. The admission policy, excuse me, had been referred to Policy Subcommittee to see if we could accept the children of students in district to make job offers more enticing. Again, I think the information came out that, you know, that would not be reimbursable. And so that was a big part of the discussion and an issue that the Policy Subcommittee did not feel comfortable moving forward with that. And then finally, we discussed the community use of school facilities. Specifically, I think this was referred to Policy Subcommittee by Mr. Lamath, I believe, and, you know, understanding that we had the Center for Martial Arts here and, excuse me, talking about their after-school program. We'll see later in our agenda that we have some approval of those agreements. And so Policy, we just discussed how we were kind of creating almost a niche for our before and after-school programs rather than charging them as somebody who's going to be there consistently day after day, week after week, rather than charging them as a one-time thing, such as our dance companies that come in and things like that, and just understanding the need to work with our community partners, for sure. And that is what we talked about in Policy.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Don Lamath.
On the policy for granting for teachers, students to come here, the rationale is that they're not school choice, so therefore we can't get reimbursed, so therefore we can't have them, is the way I understand it.
That is, that was our understanding of Policy, was that because it's, because it's, that it would not, we would not receive the funding, that that funding would remain in the districts, and for that reason, the members of the Policy Subcommittee struggled to bring that forward.
But if they applied for school choice and there was an opening, they could get accepted if they went through the lottery system. But they would have to go through the lottery system. So you can't make that as a job offer. Understand? Thank you.
Correct.
Any other discussion or comments? Dr. McCarthy.
This might actually come back. You had the international student document in front of you. When was that last reviewed by the Policy Subcommittee? Do you have?
Yep, it says 2009.
Okay, so maybe just, we'll take a look at seeing about perhaps adding a little flexibility on the future due dates after some communication on these other organizations. That's all.
Thank you. I thought I saw a hand. No? Thank you, I thought I saw a hand, no? All right, we'll move on to twenty-five dash eight dash four.
Report from the Superintendent's Evaluation Subcommittee, presentation by Dr. Marcus Ware.
Now I'll get up. Superintendent?
All right, good evening, good evening, public, as well as good evening, school committee. In your package, you have a forty-seven-page document, that is the summary of the efforts in addressing the goals that I had this year for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. Before I begin, I'd like to give thanks to my team for helping me compile this, and a special thanks to Sarah Hoare, who definitely gave me structure and order for this, so thank you, Sarah. The document is extremely condensed into the following ten slides that you see here, and this was through the recommendation from the Subcommittee, Ms. Schofield, Ms. Bernard, and Ms. Perret, to make sure that I animate for the public what they probably mean they not get out of the forty-seven-page packet. So it is the same that you will see in the packet, but I'm gonna take you through the ten slides, and then I'll welcome questions at the end, and next steps. So, in the, in the start, my goals were approved last fall, and that was based off the five priorities that I set forth before the school committee around the entry plan work that I had done, that revealed, I was gonna start with a strategic plan development that you approved this late spring, as well as the five priorities that follow. So what's here is just a reminder for the public that the plan is approved by the school committee, however, these were, this was the timeline for the plan that is available online, so it's just a casual review, as well as the vision and values that that plan brought forth, which are heretofore values that were voted upon, respect, joy, belonging, and growth, as well as our mantra, Chicka Bay Place to Belong, a Future to Build, which you will hear in convocation, and you'll hear throughout, as a theme throughout the year, that reconnects all the work we do to the plan. These are the five priorities that emerged from the plan, and even though my five goals this year were developed before this plan, you will see that they dovetail nicely into the five strategic priorities that are approved by the school committee, but this is a refresher for the public, that as we enter the twenty-five, twenty-six school year, I will tie new goals to the strategic plan, and that will be approved upon this fall as well by the school committee. For the viewing public, the first goal was around English language arts, and specifically focusing on students with disabilities, as well as multilingual learners. So what you have before you is a modulation of our benchmarks, or our assessments, that we give students throughout our district, that allows us to figure out what kind of gains they were making, especially, like I said, in our two populaces, which are multilingual learners and students with disabilities. So here you see an overall chart, we compared winter of twenty-four to winter of this past school year, twenty-five, those numbers are a little off, it's one year in between. However, what I will tell you is that, what you see here is that, a summary in which talks about the different grades, or in some of the highlights of those grades. So in the forty-seven-page packet for the viewing public, I actually highlighted the actual growth, or the successes that we had throughout the year, and then I also talked with the Subcommittee about the areas of challenge we still have to work through. So here, I'm happy to report that we have some successes in Grade Four, Grade Eight, as well as, we had some successes, small successes in special ed, but where we had our biggest bang for the buck is we made a lot of growth in our multilingual learners category. And this is not clicking, oh, there it is. Okay, I would like to thank Cindy Shaunigle, she's here this evening through the multilingual department, and all the teachers who work with them, all of our multilingual students, so that means ML teachers, as well as general ed teachers and special education. So we actually did a really good job over the past couple of years in getting the number of multilingual learners tested. So our students who are identified as multilingual learners do go through something called we call access testing every year. It's a big undertaking that happens in the schools for those former teachers on the committee, and educators who know how big of a production this is, and what we always aim to do is increase our number of students, reach all of our students to get through this testing. So there are multiple components of the testing, there's a hearing component, a speaking component, and a listening, speaking, talking component, as well as a writing component. And so here is what some of our data is showing us over the past two years, three years, and then, one of the successes that we've had here is that we were, out of our fifteen schools, five of our schools, a hundred percent of those students in those five schools had a progress rate, which means that on the scale of one through six, where we actually want our kids to always be on the scale of five and six, far as level of proficiency with the English language, we had students who actually made growth in these areas. It was a very big fee, a big celebration, I actually spoke with Ms. Shaunigle the other day, and I told her I was gonna highlight that success here this evening, so I thank her for being here, supporting, but I also give a shout-out to this multilingual department. What you see down here is what we think some of the, what we know some of those successes have come from. I would give, so, credit where credit's due, Ms. Jennifer Belleville and her office recognized a year prior that we needed some more structures in place for our multilingual learners. One of those things was talking about curriculum that we had for multilingual learners, as well as identifying students who we classify as newcomers, students with limited English proficiency, or students with limited or interrupted formal education, SLIF students, who we know we need to work on their English language acquisition. And so I will also say that we worked on improving the LATs, our Language Assessment Teams, getting training so that we're all doing the same type of assessments with our students, so that we can make sure that we, the data we see is one of pure accuracy, as well as making sure that we use that data to always inform how we're gonna do instructional cycles to actually help students improve in their language acquisition. What you also see here is like the curriculum I told you about, the HMH curriculum that we adopted, English 3D, as well as, we have something called pocket talks, that are small pieces of technology that our teachers have, as well as our office staff has, because we receive phone calls in multiple languages predominantly, I'm gonna see if I get this right with Ms. Shaunigle present, I know Spanish, I know Arabic, as well as Portuguese and Polish are some of our incident languages, and the pocket talks actually do the active translation for our families who are communicating, and sometimes our students. So these are devices that Ms. Shaunigle got through, I've pushed upon us, and we're happy that she has, so that our staff can actually communicate with families, as well as the students in their native language. This is not changing, not fun. Next slide? I don't know why. I think it's frozen, so I'm gonna see if I, oh, there it is. Okay, so we acknowledge the successes we had in the multilingual department, we also acknowledge we have some work to do with our students with disabilities, and so some of the work that I named in the multilingual department that was done a year ago that led to a lot of successes, I would like to give Dr. Stolar, her team, credit, because we're starting to do that work around the inclusion model this year, so we can look at where most of our special education students reside, which is, over ninety percent reside in our inclusion model, meaning in the general classroom, so we're looking at how we can support that better. So more to come, and we hope to see gains this upcoming year from that. Changing gears to goal number two, which was math, and with a focus with, on students with disabilities and multilingual learners, we have a little bit of a story to tell here. So the overall student performance with five of the ten grade levels showing improvement, we had lesser successes here, but we still had small pockets of success. I'd like to say that again here, the multilingual learners actually did better here as well in comparison to our students who are classified as students with disabilities. However, we are going through a math curriculum review coming up in this year, so we are already starting to make changes to really pay attention to identify what is going on with math instruction, grades pre-K all the way through our eighteen to twenty-two program. However, I think it should be noted here that, for viewing public, as well as the educators on the school committee, we know that getting kids to read by Grade Three is crucial for them to learn, so that a lot of those transferable skills come over into math as well. So I do believe that the work that we did in our ML department transferred over into math for our ML learners as well. Goal number three was student attendance, I think it's no secret that districts are, including ours, are still trying to address the pandemic fallout from two thousand and twenty, and so I'd like to give credit to achieving this goal, Ms. Carol Cruiser's office, Abby Tenzar, and everybody else. We have a lot of actual initiatives that took place here, we made sure district attendance teams were in place, we made sure that principals of running school had initiatives to actually reward students for, not reward, but entice students, come to school, we want to see you, we want you to enjoy school, and some of the highlights you see here are broken down between elementary and secondary, which were also, I couldn't remember her name because of always things that run through your mind when you're speaking earlier, but Ms. Chris and Coelho and the Family and Community Engagement Department, I would like to give a shout-out to them, they led a lot of these efforts that you see on the screen, as well as counselors, social workers, principals, vice principals, red attendance teams, where we looked at data to make sure that we were targeting students who we didn't wanna fall, fall behind with their attendance and become chronic. So that was the goal that I set forth with, and these are some of the initiatives. And here, before I go on, in your package, you'll see the data that we reduced chronic absenteeism across the whole district. It was very impressive, and that was the work that the staff did, I can't take all that credit, but I'm happy that we put the efforts on it, and it was a big reward. In your packets, because the viewing public does not see that, you will see that we reduced chronic absenteeism, and we also increased the number of days students were in the seat. So we were very happy to see that effort. Goal number four was about student conduct and student discipline, so here are the initiatives that we did here, district-wide, as well as school-level approaches, very similar, I'd like to give all the team, especially Carol Cruiser's department, the work amount of trainings that we put in front of our educators around how to support students, how to address behavior, how to incorporate new practices, like restorative practices, with our students, because we were searching for alternatives to suspension, which was one of the things that we set out to do. So these are a lot of the initiatives that you see here that we did here, and in your package, you notice that the data shows that we actually had a success story, that's why Chicka Bay Academy is referenced here, I'd like to give a shout-out to Ms. Lori Valencourt and her team over at the academy, who significantly by double digits reduced their number of suspensions, and so that is, it was very impressive, and it was noteworthy, so that's why you see it here. Through so many things that she's initiated with her team, as well as the rest of the district also did extremely good job, I'd like to give a shout-out to Mr. Bill Holt and Bellamy, they actually did a very good job in their alternative suspension, so much so that the state says you're off the list now. So Bill Holt and his team is extremely happy about that, so that's another success, and we're working on our other schools that are currently still working with the alternatives to this suspension module, I know Carol Cruiser is heading that up with the team, and we had to submit our intentions for this year. So we've had success stories over there, and we actually are gonna continue with the efforts, because we're seeing a decline in the right direction. Number five was social emotional for students and their mental health, and so here's why I'd like to give Ms. Abby Tenzar and all the counselors and support staff in the district their respect for the level of interventions and supports we give our students, whether it was looking, looking at the Panorama survey data, which is what we used, which shows a strong indication that we are doing really good in something called supportive relationships, where students feel supported by the adults who are in the building, so that's an uptick in the right direction. However, I'd like to highlight here, students are still reporting that they struggle with emotional regulation. So our students, this is a self-report survey, and so our students are telling us that they struggle with this, and so we're gonna continue with some of the systems that we put in place, whether it's the Mental Health Task Force, whether it's a PBIS system, whether it is talking to students and elevating voice and having student groups, as well as looking at our NTSS, multi-tier systems of support for our students, so that we can actually look at the level of intervention we are applying to our students. So we have, out of all the five goals, this is the one I would say where we have our work cut out for us, and we acknowledge that. So that's where I'll end that there. So the report that is in this presentation is really supporting the goals, in my opinion, and show you how I've met those goals. And so what happens now is, I'm gonna turn it over to Ms. Grace Schofield to communicate with the community committee, the next steps are, which is, will be similar to last year when the actual rubric was sent out, and then each community member ranked me, but I'll stay up here after you speak, Ms. Schofield, just in case if there are questions for me.
Well, thank you, Dr. Ware. First of all, I'd like to thank you and the entire admin team for all the data, because we, one of the things that we really wanted was data, numbers, we wanted to see numbers, comparisons, the way that you presented it in the forty-seven-page document that we all received was easy to compare last year to this year, and, you know, where the growth has been made, and where growth needs to take place. So that, kudos for all of the hard evidence that was provided. Also, it's much appreciation, when we met as a Subcommittee, we also wanted more data, and as I went through the packet, it's there, so thank you very much. One of the examples was, we wanted to know, you know, what percentage of the population was our special ed percentage, and that was like twenty-one point eight percent, and then what students were designated as both special ed and multilingual learners, you know, so the cross-references and stuff like that, so that data's all there. So thank you. What we're hoping next will be that you all have received your forms from the state, from Ms. Sarah tonight, and what we'd like you to do is to fill that out in a timely manner, using the evidence that Dr. Ware has presented in that report, and then return it to the office, and we can send out some deadline dates, as I'm hoping, within the next two weeks, and then we'll compile it and present it to the public within the next, once the data's all collected and summarized, and then we can present your ratings to the public. Did I forget anything?
No, I think so.
Questions?
Thank you, Grace, any questions or comments? Any discussion? Deanna Russo?
Outside of this current review, just was curious, the time, I know that the school year is about to start, just curious about the timing of when your goals will be introduced, as I'm sure it's connected to the strategic plan, your vision for the school year, so just was curious on that timing.
Absolutely, so I actually just mentioned to the team on Monday when we met in Cabinet, that, I made a joke, I think it was to Carol or Jen, and I said, I have to do my goals first, so the goals that I will be doing will have, the timeline I'm used to, and not be as a superintendent, of course, but as an educator, is that October's the month that you actually make sure that by October thirty-first, that my goals, so I'm thinking by the Second School Committee meeting in the month of October, that I will present to you the goals for this upcoming year, that are connected to the plan, for the five strategic priorities that are there, as well as the addition of data and giving specific metrics that, where I would like to move and see, given that, now that I feel like there's a stronger hold of systems in place, so that should be October-ish.
All set? Grace Schofield?
So, if I'm understanding you correctly, so with that presentation, you would include, like, number-wise, data-wise, as how much growth you would hope to see?
Correct.
Thank you.
So we, you know, as you know, we call those Smarties goals, so we, measurable, attainable, reachable, yes, so that, those will take on that format this year in my, in my goal setting as well.
Thank you.
Thank you, any other questions, discussion, comments? Thank you, Dr. Ware.
Thank you. Thank you.
Move that the bills warrant S071125 totaling $1,742.63 be approved.
Sonny, can I get a motion?
Motion to approve.
I have a motion to approve. Any discussion? Jay, could you read the warrants into the official record, please?
Absolutely. So this evening, I'm being put to the test. We have six warrants we will be voting on this evening. I will read the totals of the six warrants altogether, and then we will vote on them individually. For athletics, $55,359. Food services, $164,724. General expenses, $1,70346. Grants, $903,574. Maintenance, $717,428. Reimbursements, $1,137. Special education, $101,921. Student activities, $14,777. Transportation, $820,723. Telecommunications, $152,140. Sales tax, $424. For the grand total of all six warrants this evening totaling $4,632,559.
Thank you, Jay. We'll be voting on the first warrant, that's S071125 totaling $1,742.63. Any discussion or comments about the first warrant? Seeing none, we'll take a roll call.
Mr. Barcello?
Yes.
Mr. Dout?
Abstain.
Mrs. Perret?
Yes.
Mrs. Schofield?
Yes.
Mr. Brooks?
Yes.
Mr. Lamoth?
Yes.
Mr. Gerard?
Yes.
Mr. Bernard?
Yes.
Mrs. Lopes?
Yes.
Dr. McCarthy?
Yes.
Mayor View?
Yes.
Ms. Russo?
Yes.
11 yes, one abstained.
Motion carries, 25-8-6.
Move that the bills warrant S071825 totaling $224,302.56 be approved.
Dr. McCarthy?
Motion to approve.
I have a motion to approve. Any discussion on the second warrant? Any comments? Susan Satella-Lopes?
We purchased a new slide for the Bowie School Playground.
Thank you. Any further discussion? We'll take a roll call.
Mr. Barcello?
Yes.
Mr. Dout?
Yes.
Mrs. Perret?
Yes.
Mrs. Schofield?
Yes.
Mr. Brooks?
Yes.
Mr. Lamoth?
Yes.
Mr. Gerard?
Yes.
Mr. Bernard?
Yes.
Mrs. Lopes?
Yes.
Dr. McCarthy?
Yes.
Mayor View?
Yes.
Ms. Russo?
Yes.
12 yes.
Motion carries, 25-8-7.
Move that the bills warrant S072525 totaling $736,377.49 be approved.
Susan, can I get a motion?
Motion to approve.
I have a motion to approve. Any discussion or comments on the third warrant? Seeing none, we'll take a roll call.
Mr. Barcello?
Yes.
Mr. Dout?
Yes.
Mrs. Perret?
Yes.
Mrs. Schofield?
Yes.
Mr. Brooks?
Yes.
Mr. Lamoth?
Yes.
Mr. Gerard?
Yes.
Mr. Bernard?
Yes.
Mrs. Lopes?
Yes.
Dr. McCarthy?
Yes.
Mayor View?
Yes.
Ms. Russo?
Yes.
12 yes.
Motion carries, 25-8-8.
Move that the bills warrant, S, excuse me, warrant P080, excuse me, everyone, I refrited that. Warrant P080125 totaling $1,144,005.10 be approved.
Grace Schofield, can I get a motion?
Motion to approve.
I have a motion to approve. Any discussion or comments on the fourth warrant? Seeing none, we'll take a roll call.
Mr. Barcello?
Yes.
Mr. Dout?
Yes.
Mrs. Perret?
Yes.
Mrs. Schofield?
Yes.
Mr. Brooks?
Yes.
Mr. Lamoth?
Yes.
Mr. Gerard?
Yes.
Mr. Bernard?
Yes.
Mrs. Lopes?
Yes.
Dr. McCarthy?
Yes.
Mayor View?
Yes.
Ms. Russo?
Yes.
12 yes.
Motion carries, 25-8-9.
Move that the bills warrant S080825 totaling $323,410.95 be approved.
Doug Gerard, can I get a motion?
Motion to approve.
I have a motion to approve. Any discussion or comments on the fifth warrant? Seeing none, we'll take a roll call.
Mr. Barcello?
Yes.
Mr. Dout?
Yes.
Mrs. Perret?
Yes.
Mrs. Schofield?
Yes.
Mr. Brooks?
Yes.
Mr. Lamoth?
Yes.
Mr. Gerard?
Yes.
Mr. Bernard?
Yes.
Mrs. Lopes?
Yes.
Dr. McCarthy?
Yes.
Mayor View?
Yes.
Ms. Russo?
Yes.
12 yes.
Motion carries, 25-8-10.
Move that the bills warrant S081525 totaling $504,346.40 be approved.
Sandra, can I get a motion?
Motion to approve.
I have a motion to approve. Any discussion or comments on the sixth and final warrant? Seeing, Susan?
I'd love to make mention of ProCurve Flight Simulator for Dupont School. I think they're starting up teaching students to be pilots, right?
That's the goal, Ms. Lopes, yes, to do the simulation.
Yeah, that's great. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion or comments? We'll take a roll call.
Mr. Barcello?
Yes.
Mr. Dout?
Yes.
Mrs. Perret?
Yes.
Mrs. Schofield?
Yes.
Mr. Brooks?
Yes.
Mr. Lamoth?
Yes.
Mr. Gerard?
Yes.
Mr. Bernard?
Yes.
Mrs. Lopes?
Yes.
Dr. McCarthy?
Yes.
Mayor View?
Yes.
Ms. Russo?
Yes.
12 yes.
Motion carries, 25-8-11.
Move that the memorandum of agreement between the Chickamae Education Association and Chickamae School Committee regarding student support facilitators be approved, and the chairperson be authorized to sign.
Deanna Russo, can I get a motion?
Motion to approve.
I have a motion to approve the memorandum of agreement between the CEA and the Chickamae School Committee regarding behavioral technicians. Any discussion or comments? Seeing none, it is a memorandum of agreement. I will ask for a roll call, please.
Mr. Barcello?
Yes.
Mr. Dout?
Yes.
Mrs. Perret?
Yes.
Mrs. Schofield?
Yes.
Mr. Brooks?
Yes.
Mr. Lamoth?
Yes.
Mr. Gerard?
Yes.
Mr. Bernard?
Yes.
Mrs. Lopes?
Yes.
Dr. McCarthy?
Yes.
Mayor View?
Yes.
Ms. Russo?
Yes.
12 yes.
Motion carries, 25-8-12.
Move that the memorandum of agreement between the Chickamae Education Association and Chickamae School Committee regarding behavioral technicians be approved, and the chairperson be authorized to sign.
Jay Dout, can I get a motion?
Motion to approve.
I have a motion to approve the memorandum of agreement between the CEA and the Chickamae School Committee regarding behavioral technicians. Any discussion or comments? Seeing none, it is a memorandum of agreement. I will ask for a roll call, please.
Mr. Barcello?
Yes.
Mr. Dout?
Yes.
Mrs. Perret?
Yes.
Mrs. Schofield?
Yes.
Mr. Brooks?
Yes.
Mr. Lamoth?
Yes.
Mr. Gerard?
Yes.
Mr. Bernard?
Yes.
Mrs. Lopes?
Yes.
Dr. McCarthy?
Yes.
Mayor View?
Yes.
Ms. Russo?
Yes.
12 yes.
Motion carries, 25-8-13.
Move that the memorandum of agreement between the Chickamae Education Association and Chickamae School Committee regarding cheerleading, assistant coaches be approved, and the chairperson be authorized to sign.
Ron Bernard?
Motion to approve.
So I have a motion to approve the memorandum of agreement between the CEA and the Chickamae School Committee regarding cheerleading and coaches. Down the mouth.
Yes, from time to time, a motion like this will come before us where normally we have, say, one assistant coach, but the numbers are so high that they need a second assistant due to safety. This has happened with track and football and soccer sometimes, so they must have a pretty good sized group. So that's why it's before us.
Thank you. Any other discuss, Deanna Russo?
Yeah, I just had a question on numbers. I completely agree that there should be more supervision when the numbers are higher. Is that as of the beginning of that, like, sports cycle, that the number of students are counted, or does it adjust if students drop out? I just was curious how that would work.
That's a good question. I'm going to ask Ms. Cruiser if she has enough to.
So depending on the sport, so if you're talking about cheerleading, that's actually a year-round sport, so they have a couple different times where they have sign-ups. So it has definitely grown. Usually for other sports, you find out during the season, like right now, fall tryouts are going on. And so probably the first or second week of school, we will know if more people have signed up and if it's ballooned. But it's at the beginning of each season. Cheerleading is just a little different because it's actually a year-round sport.
Okay. But, so if you were to enter the second half of the year and cheerleaders, for whatever reason, has increased, would we then add the new coach? I guess that's what I'm clear on.
We would have to come back and ask again if the numbers got that big.
So hypothetically speaking, right, it's under 28 in the fall sports season, so there would only be one assistant coach. But if we were in the winter season, it's over 28.
So we're close to like 40 now, 40 plus?
Okay, all right. Thank you.
All set?
Mm-hmm.
Thank you. Any other questions, discussion, or comments? We'll take a roll call, please.
Mr. Barcello?
Yes.
Mr. Dout?
Yes.
Mrs. Perret?
Yes.
Mrs. Schofield?
Yes.
Mr. Brooks?
Yes.
Mr. Lamoth?
Yes.
Mr. Gerard?
Yes.
Mr. Bernard?
Yes.
Mrs. Lopes?
Yes.
Dr. McCarthy?
Yes.
Mayor View?
Yes.
Ms. Russo?
Yes.
12 yes.
All set?
Mm-hmm.
Thank you. Any other questions, discussion, or comments? We'll take a roll call, please.
Mr. Barcello?
Yes.
Mr. Dout?
Yes.
Mrs. Perret?
Yes.
Mrs. Schofield?
Yes.
Mr. Brooks?
Yes.
Mr. Lamoth?
Yes.
Mr. Gerard?
Yes.
Mr. Bernard?
Yes.
Mrs. Lopes?
Yes.
Dr. McCarthy?
Yes.
Mayor View?
Yes.
Ms. Russo?
Yes.
12 yes.
All set?
Mm-hmm.
Thank you. Any other questions, discussion, or comments? We'll take a roll call, please.
Mr. Barcello?
Yes.
Mr. Dout?
Yes.
Mrs. Perret?
Yes.
Mrs. Schofield?
Yes.
Mr. Brooks?
Yes.
Mr. Lamoth?
Yes.
Mr. Gerard?
Yes.
Mr. Bernard?
Yes.
Mrs. Lopes?
Yes.
Dr. McCarthy?
Yes.
Mayor View?
Yes.
Ms. Russo?
Yes.
12 yes.
Motion carries, 25-8-14.
Move that the license agreement between the Center for Martial Arts and Fitness and the Chickamae School Committee be approved, and the chairperson be authorized to sign.
Dave Barcello, can I get a motion?
Motion to approve.
I have a motion to approve the license agreement between the Center for Martial Arts and Fitness and the Chickamae School Committee. Discussion, Jay.
Yeah, I just had a question. I see that on the agenda tonight is four different license agreements, and I see that those agreements are for different amounts. So I'm just wondering if we could get the rationale or how it was that we arrived at the amounts at which we're charging people.
I'd like to turn it over to Ms. Bouchard, Attorney Bouchard.
We'll defer to Attorney Bouchard.
So the policy subcommittee reviewed this issue at the meeting that Mr. Dout talked about a minute ago. These agreements are longer-term, not one-day rentals, as Mr. Dout talked about a little bit ago. And so that's why they come outside of the policy. They're not the same, they're a long-term arrangement with a vendor who we consider to be a partner providing a service to our families with an after-school program or a before-school program in some cases.
So to fully answer the question, so the chart that we looked at and we decided on was based on a flat fee, but based on a range of people. So why you see a difference in prices is because, for instance, One Strong Community is a brand-new organization that right now is authorized from one to 20 kids. They have about four students right now. So where you see a difference in price is when there's a difference in number of kids or a different number of the spaces that they need. So one space might just need a cafeteria and one space might need a cafeteria and a gym. So it's based on the number of kids and the space and the spaces that they need.
Is, I'm not sure.
Right, and some of them are summer before and after, some are only after school, some include summer and school vacation. I think we're covering all the variations there. Can you think of?
So they're very unique and specific to that particular organization, like mentioned by Attorney Bouchard. You know, one of the organizations actually includes summer as well.
No, I understand that, but I guess my question is that the four agreements all have different hourly rates. It's not about how much they're being charged for the year. And so I'm just curious how we arrived at those totals for the hourly rates for those four different programs.
It's based on numbers and space, like it was explained. So if you have a very large program, your rent is probably going to be higher based on the space and need for occupancy.
So can I ask, and I don't know if I need to ask individually for each one, but how many, what is the cap for each one of these programs that we're approving tonight? How many students can they accommodate?
Jay, I think it'd be appropriate to go through them individually and.
So the reason why I ask is I when I was reviewing it, again, those hourly rates are quite different. And with all due respect, the reason why I was asking is because before I approve one or two, I'm curious to know what the caps are so that we can see that it's just being proportionately that so that we're charging people kind of proportionate and just understanding if one program has a cap of 20 kids and another program has a cap of 50 kids, then then I can understand the kind of the rationale and I can kind of support the approval of these rates. But it's hard to approve one without understanding and having that understanding that we have essentially kind of a formula that we're applying to all four. And so that's why I'm asking, with all due respect, what the caps are for each one so that we can make sure that it's just being proportionately applied to all four programs that we have.
Great question. I'll defer.
I can answer it. So if you go down the line, the the Center for Martial Arts has a cap of 110. Playful Minds, they have a couple of different sites. There's a cap of 20 at each site. And for right now, the One Strong Community has a cap of 10 for right now, with the hope they would like to increase it to 20 to 24. And the YMCA has a cap of 20.
So there is, could you please elaborate more that you're using a formula?
We are using a formula, and it's the same formula across the board. So we apply the exact same principle to all the lease agreements, making sure that, you know, it was one to 10, 11 to 20, and then it continued on, the highest one being the martial arts, which was 81 to 110 kids.
Can you provide that to the school committee?
I can.
You'll get a copy.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Sonny Brooks.
What are the checks and balances we have in place when these groups add additional students to their programs? I know we have a cap, as you just explained. But what are our checks and balances when we find out months down the road that a group is supposed to have 20, now has 35, or is supposed to have 100, now has 150?
They're required to hand us a roster.
How often do we get the roster? The beginning of the year? The middle of the year, do we get a second roster so we can compare? Or do we just say we trust everybody?
I'll defer. I don't have that answer.
The the agreements that are in front of you include a provision where we can ask for the rosters, that they'll be provided, made available. And also that we'll do an annual kind of review of the program to go over like how it's gone. And that's going to be conducted by Ms. Cruiser's office. We're really looking at these as kind of partnerships with these vendors to provide before and after-school programming for our families. And so Carol's office is going to kind of be more intimately involved with kind of looking at what's happening in these programs at each of the sites.
And I have been meeting with the principals, and I actually just had a meeting today with Scott Chatelain. So with the principals who are having these programs to go over the expectations and what they need and what support they need. And also had a meeting with Scott today about putting those expectations out there for the facilities and for Scott and I to work in partnership to pop in and look at the programs periodically.
Any other questions or discussion? Dr. Mark McCarthy, please.
Yeah, just to kind of follow along with Jay's line of thinking. I appreciate that we're going to have the formula shared with us, but I think it should be publicly available as well, not just shared with the committee because not to say that this is what happened, but we have people that come here and they talk about something and then their their rate changes. It doesn't doesn't equally serve all organizations if to show up and complain is the way that you get a preferable rate. So I think it'd be great if we could have transparency around that so that everyone knows this is what the policy is. And so I just want to make sure that it's like available on the website or whatever the process might be as well to make it publicly available, not just to us inquiring minds at this table. Thanks.
Thank you. Deanna Russo, second time.
I think this is my first for this one. So anyways.
First time, first time.
So for, just because the word policy was said specifically, I think that and this is just semantics, it's just the word policy, like these rates are not in that policy correct. Yes, I think it's just understanding the process, I think, is the word that might might be there. But I just wanted, just based on some of the feedback that we had received and definitely wanting to encourage programs like this to come in into our schools and to provide additional care for our students while respecting our spaces. I just, when a license agreement is brought to us, is it something that's just calculated and then we vote on it? Or is there negotiation, discussion, communication with these individuals before it's brought to us? I just wanted to understand the timing and the process of that.
That's a good question. I will defer again.
So we're usually approached by organizations that want to provide the programming and we work individually with those programs to work out arrangements for them at different schools. We want to have more partnerships with outside vendors to provide before and after-school services to our kids like that. Our families need that, right? So we try to come up with a something that works for everybody based on their size. As Carol said, you know, if you have someone who's only has four students, if we charge a rent for the use of our facilities, that makes it impossible for someone who's starting out with four students. We'll never get that program off the ground. So we try to create a flexible sliding fee scale, for lack of a better term, based on the number of kids that were in participating in the program that would work for the organization, would work for our families. And that's kind of what we try to do. And, you know, if there are any other people out there that want to, you know, participate and provide these programs, we obviously need this kind of support for our kids and our families. And Dr. Ware has given the directive to to Ms. Cruiser and to myself to, you know, make this happen. So we're we're trying to do that.
So it hasn't existed prior? Is that what we're saying?
What was the question? I couldn't hear you.
So it hasn't existed prior? Is that what you're saying? You said you got the directive to create this sliding scale?
So I can speak to that. When I got here, I didn't understand the process in which we use. I know we had license agreements. And I was receiving requests from vendors trying to honor past agreements. And I didn't understand where that was coming from because it wasn't a policy, it was a practice. And I think with each superintendent, there was a different practice. So two things, and the mayor knows this, my research is in after-school programs, so I felt like, I was like, I can speak to this. And so I did ask Ms. Cruiser's department along with Attorney Bouchard. I was like, we need something in alignment, we need something with structure. So yeah, I think before me, I I don't, I think it was different. And I hear that as certain formulas were applied in the past year, in two years. And so we're just getting caught up to actually address this. So I think from what some of the school committee members were addressing, I think it feels like there was a change. But I don't have, to quote someone on this board, I don't have a drawer with past promises. So I don't know what I'm honoring. So as that happened.
Did you quote me?
Yes, I did, Mayor. And so, so I'm trying to just provide transparency and structure across the board to Dr. McCarthy's point and to your point, Ms. Russo. That's why I asked Ms. Cruiser and Attorney Bouchard. So it is new. So I do think it's different from before I asked them to do it.
Yeah, okay.
Just for some clarity too, I believe in the past, they may have been called lease agreements. And through the law department here at City Hall and working in collaboration with the school district and Attorney Bouchard and the assistant superintendents, we've come to this license agreement is more appropriate. And now to for, as Dr. McCarthy is referencing, transparency reasons, we want to make sure that we have a uniform process and it's more based on a combination of space and numbers, I think is being appropriate to say. And and making it as uniform as possible and also being fair. It's certainly a service that needs to be provided for before and after-school and not an inclusive also summer programming for our parents. And for these kids, they need a place to go if for the ones who have to go to work and are seeking some type of safe, protected, comfortable before and after-school programs. And I think those partnerships are are going to grow.
Yeah, no, and to echo Dr. McCarthy and Jay as well, I think just based on the guidance we had received in the last policy meeting, we did not correct or update our policy itself. So I look forward to see how we will make this more transparent for other organizations to be able to see the pricing if it's not within the policy. I think it's important that that's available for people to know how they can help serve our schools, so.
Thank you. Now, I want to commend the superintendent for, you know, that is his background, his his research has been in after-school programs, correct?
Yes.
And knowing that, and he knows the importance of them and creating the uniform policy that it really fits the need of each organization, whether it be a starter or a well-established group that's engaged with working with our student population. So thank you, Doctor, for understanding and respecting the need of of the community. Jay.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I mean, I don't think there's anyone on the board who would say, obviously, we don't need after-school and before-school programs. As a parent, I can say that, you know, they're paramount in order to being able to get to and from work, for sure. I guess where I'm struggling with this is is that, and I'm I'm going to be very clear at this point, I don't, so let me ask this. Would it be fair to say that based off of how close we are to the school year that this is we're hoping and kind of need to pass these agreements this evening? So my issue that I'm having with it is that, and again, right, if this isn't the right time to talk about it, I do understand because I know we're on a certain item, agenda item. But there are two programs that we're talking about today that have the same cap, that use the same space, that are being charged different hourly rates. And so I'm just looking for for clarity to the public, for that justification. Why is it that we're charging two different rates if it's the same cap? If they're using the same space in the schools? And if, what is the formula? I don't know if we, if it's appropriate to ask for a recess so we can see the formula, but right now, I'm seeing some kind of discrepancies with what the caps are and the spaces.
The team is respectfully not understanding what you're saying, so I think we can ask you for that clarity. It would have been wonderful, Jay, if you would have called to get your clarity prior to us voting tonight. I'm I'm not sure why you wouldn't have. I think that they're a little bit confused at what you're suggesting, but.
So so what I'm suggesting, Mayor, is that one of one of our agenda items that has a cap of 20 students, we were just told that the cap is 20 students and they're being charged 1750 an hour per the documents that we received. Another program that has a cap of 20 students that what the documentation that was provided to us uses a similar space in the school buildings is being charged $20 an hour. And I just, for, right, we had some after-school programs who weren't happy with stuff, and I want to make sure everyone is happy. I want to make sure that we're able to do this. I want to make sure we can continue to do this. But I I struggle if there is two different prices, then I I'm struggling to approve that this evening. So I'm not sure if we need a recess in order for people to like get that information or whatever it is. But at this point, I'm not comfortable moving forward because we were told two different programs that have the same cap, that use the same space and different rates.
I think they're working on it as we speak. That's not the item that's on right now. We're talking about specifically which one are we on here?
So can I can I make a?
So we're on the Center for Martial Arts, it's on the floor.
So can I make a motion to postpone the vote for Center for Martial Arts until we're, we have the formula in front of us, please?
He has a motion to postpone the license agreement with the Center for Martial Arts and Fitness. Their motion. Any discussion on the motion? Susan.
Is there any detriment to postponing it?
They can't start, they can't start. We won't be able to have them start until the vote. So the next school committee meeting is the first week of September, I believe, September 3rd. Is that accurate?
Yeah.
So they could, they would be, they would just start the week, or the day after or the week after. Which is, you know, I think they have every attention on starting day one. However, I'm going to defer to Ms. Cruiser about the start dates because that's me making an assumption.
哪些of the programs are when school starts?
Oh, they are day one, okay.
Because I I wasn't physically involved in the discussions concerning the Center for Martial Arts. But there was probably about eight email correspondences between myself and the superintendent and and everyone involved. And I know it started off rocky, but the way it ended was just delightful. It went so well.
I I agree. Thank you for that. So the Center of Martial for Martial Arts and Fitness is excited about being in, keep continuing the partnership with the city of Chickapi. And I'll just share that with the viewing audience. Dr. McCarthy.
I'm just wondering if I might request Jay amend your motion to ask to take 818 and 819 out of order, perhaps giving us a few minutes of breathing room?
I most certainly would be open to that. I guess my.
No, I'm sorry, we have a motion on the floor for 25-8-14, and that is to postpone.
Right, he was asking me if I would amend my motion, I believe, is what Dr. McCarthy was asking me. To to take, to withdraw the motion, to take the other ones that the issue exists with out of order so that we can kind of see the discrepancies between those. I just don't know how we look at the discrepancies between those two agreements with only being able to discuss one at a time is my concern.
Okay, but that's not on the floor right now. We're talking about 25-8-14, which is the Center for Martial Arts and Fitness. You have a motion to postpone. Do you want to continue with the motion? We're about to vote on it. So you can continue with your motion or you can withdraw it. He's asked you to, so you want to make a motion to to take this one out?
I'll continue with my motion, Mayor, thank you.
What's that?
I will continue with my motion, Mayor, thank you.
Any other discussion on the motion? So we have a motion to postpone the license agreement arrangement between the Center of Martial Arts and Fitness. We'll take a roll call.
Mr. Barcello?
Yes.
Mr. Doubt?
Yes.
Mrs. Perret?
Yes.
Mrs. Schofield?
Yes.
Mr. Brooks?
Yes.
Mr. Lamoth?
Yes.
Mr. Gerard?
Yes.
Mr. Bernard?
Yes.
Mrs. Loebz?
Yes.
Dr. McCarthy?
Yes.
Mayor View?
No.
Ms. Russo?
Yes.
11 yes, one no.
So the motion was to postpone the license agreement. So now, just just for a point of information, the Center for Martial Arts will not be able to to open on opening day with this postponement.
Respectfully, Mayor, I do understand that, but I want to make sure we're given the same opportunity to every vendor that we have and that we're making, we're applying. If this isn't a policy and this is something that we're creating, that we're applying it proportionately to all of our vendors and that we're charging the same price to our vendors.
Is anyone considering, who voted a a yes to reconsider? Anyone who voted a yes that would potentially reconsider? Ask for a motion for reconsideration. Dr. McCarthy. For the clarity of this group that you've just postponed them from opening on opening day.
Point of clarity, if I could. Does postponement necessarily mean to another meeting?
What's the question?
Does postponement necessarily mean to another meeting or postpone can mean later this evening?
I assume he meant to the next meeting.
Unfortunately, I would like to postpone until we have the formula and we can figure out this discrepancy.
So may I, may I ask a question, Mr. Mayor?
Sure.
Is the contract that you have a question about, the Belcher contract, the YMCA?
One is YMCA and one is Playful Minds.
So can you tell me what the question is?
So taking a look as best I can at the contracts here, it looks as if when I when I ask the question what the caps were, both Playful Minds and the YMCA both have the same cap of 20 students.
Okay, so I think that's the problem. I think Ms. Cruiser misspoke when she said that the YMCA had the same number of students as Playful Minds. They have over 20 students. And Playful Minds has under 20 students, so one is at the 1750 rate and one is at the $20 rate.
So what is the cap for these programs then?
So it's not a cap, it's a range of students participating in the programs. And I think Ms. Cruiser was just trying to supply you with information to give you an idea without knowing. I didn't know until just now which actual contract you had a question about. My understanding is that the YMCA has more than 20 students in their program at Belcher. And that the Playful Minds contracts, the Playful Minds programs have less than 20 students. And that's our our range mark is over 20 and under 20, and that accounts for the differentiation in the pricing on the contract.
You voted yes. You have to be an affirmative.
So I I guess realistically, my question is, right now, all programs have zero students, correct? Because we're not in session. So if the programs have zero and we're not talking about caps, we're talking about how many students we have, I I don't know how we figure out what rate we're charging them.
So we have to, in order for them to use our space, we have to have an agreement with them. They tell us what they anticipate based on their enrollment and their signups, the number of students that will be in their program. And then based on that representation from them, we create a draft contract that reflects that range of students. If that number changes, there's language in the agreement that allows us to change the pricing on that contract. And so, no, of course, they can't guarantee, but they they they've been running these programs in our buildings for years. They know how many families they have from one year to the next, unless you're a startup, you know, who's trying to just get off the ground. So for years, they've had the same number of kids, Playful Minds, YMCA, they've been with us for, how long, Sarah?
20.
20 years, probably. So they they tell us this is how many kids we think we're going to have.
So have they told us that number for this upcoming school year, how many kids they're going to have?
And that is how we created these draft contracts.
And what were the what were the numbers that they that they were expecting? At least, I know it's not precise, but what were the numbers that they said they were expecting, if I could ask?
So I don't, I can, I mean, if you ask me a specific question, I can try to get you specific information. But, you know, there's a lot of different agreements there.
Okay, so we're we're actually starting to get this dialogue going back and forth. Can we please go through the chair? And and we're actually off topic. We're talking about the Center for Martial Arts. And I understand that this formula is connected to other parts of this agenda, but we have to stick to what's on the floor. So right now, actually, we're moving on to the next item.
Right, we voted on martial arts, correct?
So I have actually, Don, did you want to make a motion?
I'd like to make a motion reconsider, now that I've heard the conversation back and.
Don has voted in the affirmative, and he has made a motion that we reconsider our vote for 25-8-14. That's the license agreement between the Center of Martial Arts and Fitness and the Chickapi School Committee. On the motion.
I've heard the conversation back and forth and the concerns that Mr. Doubt posed. I'm comfortable with them now, so I'm willing to vote.
Okay, so we have a motion to approve the the license agreement?
Yes.
Any discussion? Jay Doubt.
In the agreement, does it list that what the charge is based off of how many students? If we're saying that they're, right, that if they're in a certain threshold and then if they exceed a certain number, they go into the next threshold, that's not in the agreement, am I correct in that?
I don't have the agreement in front of me, Jay.
It's in the attached information in the agenda, but I mean, I'm taking a look at it. And I don't, I don't see in there any sort of rate schedule to where we would say if you go up by to this number of students, then your rate will go up. And we're saying that that's what we would do, but we don't have anything in the agreement. So I just question how we would make that happen.
So I think what I said that we would do and that with the language that we had there is that if a program, so if YMCA says, we hope we have 40 kids this year, and so we enter into an agreement for them to have.
Please just stay with the Center of Martial Arts, please, because that's what he's referring, that's on the floor.
We're on Playful Minds right now.
We're actually not. We're on reconsidering the Center for Martial Arts and Fitness. So can we please just stick with what's.
Sure, there's language in the Center for Martial Arts agreement that says if they fail to receive sufficient revenues from the operation of the program to support the costs, that we would consider a reduction in payments to allow them to continue operating. And that is in keeping with the philosophy to support the before and after-school programs and the vacation camp programs that are being run to for the families. So this is a one-year agreement based on the representation from the other parties of what they expect for anticipated enrollment. If they can't make that number, we can renegotiate with them.
You still have the floor, Jay.
Thank you. We're in this situation because they weren't accurately reporting their numbers. They weren't telling us how many students were coming. So my concern isn't if they have less students, of course, we'll drop their money down because that's what we're doing with everyone else. What if instead of 100 people, what if all of a sudden they have 120? What if they end up with 140? There's nothing in the agreement that says anything that I can see, unless somebody can show me otherwise, that says anything about numbers, that says anything about pricing based off of numbers. based off of numbers. And so, we're, we're in this situation because they weren't accurately reporting to us, and they got upset with us because we started charging them what we should have been, based off of how many people they had. So I'm just looking for, if they start to, if they start to exceed the number that they say they think they're going to have, the number that we say, based off of this formula that exists somewhere, that, based off of this formula, if you go over this number, we're going to bump it up, like, that's how we got in this situation to begin with. So I'm just curious where that information is, or where we can get it prior to this vote, I suppose.
Okay. Don Gerard?
I think the board should know that these are kind of contracts that are, that are set up with the individual vendors based on needs of our children. And the martial arts, you're right, Jay, he does have the most kids in the program, so that's why he's paying almost seventy thousand dollars to use our space for the year. And he does programs in the vacation weeks, he does programs in, excuse me, the summertime, throughout the whole school year, before school, after school. So there's a big need there, so he, they negotiate with the IT team, I think, I would assume, that he, he gives a proposal about what he wants to do and how he wants to have his business help, help the families out. And, so he's in a different situation than, say, someone with, like, the YMCA, or the Playful Minds that has a smaller amount of kids, or, as Becky alluded to us earlier, there may be a new program that comes in that may only attract four or five kids. They can't afford to pay that, but our district needs that type of help for, maybe a child that's substantially, you know, needs extra help, or, so I think all of these, and it's no different than, I think, other city contracts, when they, when they send out, you know, a contract to bid on a street, or to bid on, you know, a project that's being done, they submit a proposal, if there's no one else to do it, and it's a need of the city, we don't have ten Playful Minds knocking on our door to try to run programs in our school, but our district needs those type of people. So, I think that's where there's a little gray area, you know, we have to sit there and look at how bad we need this, and maybe that's why there's a little bit of a discrepancy, it's not dollar for dollar for the kid. That's just my take on, you know, what is actually being discussed here. And maybe in the future, you know, we could possibly, but I mean, are you going to go around the building and start adding up, you know, three rooms in every square foot, divided by this or that? To me, it's a contract that the school, the city of Chicopee and the school department agrees to needing someone, same thing as a plow vendor, okay? You're going to come in, you're going to plow some, some lots for us, you're going to charge us, we're going to charge you X amount of dollars, the city says, okay, we're going to pay it. Well, we need, we need some after-school programs, and, you know, the guy for the martial arts has a hundred and fifty kids or a hundred and thirty kids, we can charge him a little bit more, he's using a lot more space, there's a lot more cleanup, there's more lights, there's more, and it seems like there's pretty much a cap on some of these other smaller programs, where it's kind of in that gray area right now. So, that's just-
Thank you. Alsa?
Yes.
Another point of information, Becky?
So, one other important thing for you to know is that these programs are licensed by EEC, Early Elementary, early, thank you, Early Education and Childcare, it's been a long day. And so, for example, the caps on the programs are set by their licensing organization. So just picking one, Center for Martial Arts, he's capped at one hundred and ten by his EEC license. In the agreement, we say that they have to maintain a proper license. They come and do inspections at the sites in, in our buildings, and monitor those programs, and part of our agreement is that they have to maintain a license by a vendor. So we, we do check to make sure that they are licensed to do the work that they're carrying out in our schools, and those, those, all those programs are provided oversight by EEC, including how many kids they have, how much staff they have per kid, what type of program, and they have safety, all those kinds of things, similar to how we're monitored by the state as well. And then, we did add the language in for the daily attendance roster being available to the committee, that's new language for us. And we also added a new language where we would be able to review the programs each year. So one-year agreement, we want to get them out there, see how it goes. Ms. Cruiser's going to be much more actively involved, kind of giving some oversight, making sure it's working for our families, making sure it's working for our buildings, and again, the EEC is also going to be supervising programs as well.
So for clarity, the Center for Martial Arts and Fitness is capped at a hundred and ten. Next up, Don Lamoth.
Yes, and, and now that we know that they're capped at one ten, I'd like just to have a report halfway through the year, is what they have, and that way there, the school committee can stay informed. And I'd like to vote on this.
Sandra Perret?
And we would, well, you're asking for a report at the half a year, but we would also get a, a listing of their roster as well, correct?
Numbers.
They should be providing a roster as it grows.
To the office.
To, to Ms. Cruiser.
Right, exactly. And then, just share with me, Doctor, where if this program does not start at the, at the beginning of the school year, it would have, there would be a negative impact on our children.
Correct. And next up, Sunny Brooks.
First, I would have to agree with Jay a hundred percent. These programs that are coming, they're outstanding for their children, but they're also for-profit programs. So, it's, it's not like it's, it's a freebie that we're handing out. So having the numbers where we can get it, because some of us receive no numbers at all, no copies of the agreement. So we're sitting here trying to debate and talk about something that we did not receive, or, if we got it, we just got it this evening, and had no chance to really study it and understand what's going on. But, I would have to agree, we need something in writing discussing all the rates and the numbers, so that we can have an objective opinion.
So just a point of information, you have the agreement, you received it on Friday.
We got it when?
Friday.
It was to me.
Alsa? Deanna Russo?
This is just a question on the calculation itself. Is the calculation based on the license, like, the license itself, the number of students that are covered underneath that license?
It's based on the sliding scale of, you know, which I will get to, the one to ten, or the twenty to whatever, whatever we set up. In addition, they do have their own set that they can't go over. So for instance, One Strong Community, when he gets his license, I believe, it will, he's hoping for the license to take twenty-four, but right now, he's just starting out, he only has four or five kids signed up.
Understood. Okay. Yeah, I, oh, sorry. I was just going to say, I think, just to echo the sentiments, I think, of the entire board, I think it's important to approve this tonight. I think moving forward, it'd be very helpful if there was more support within any agreement to structure why it is the way it is. There should be, outside of hours, times, a rate, we need to understand where that rate came from. So I hope, moving forward, that documentation is included in any license we create, license agreement we create, sorry.
Thank you. Don, you, Alsa? So the motion to approve, we reconsider and approve?
Yes.
So, I'm sorry, we have to take a motion to reconsider first.
All right.
So the motion is to reconsider the vote that was denied for the, I'm sorry, the motion to postpone. We're going to reconsider the motion to postpone. We'll take a roll call.
A yes, no, V means?
A yes vote means that we are-
Reconsidering.
Reconsidering, yeah. Yes.
When you're doing a motion to reconsider, you're just, you have the same motion again.
I think, clear, a motion to reconsider, so a yes vote is, we will reconsider, and then we'll take another motion.
Got it.
Roll call, please, and a motion to reconsider.
Reconsider means we are going to reconsider it by voting again.
Clears the slate, and we bring it back.
So it's two separate, two separate motions, a motion-
Motion to reconsider.
As to whether or not we would wish to reconsider, and then, a second motion, a second vote on the actual motion.
Sarah, can I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Barcello?
Yes.
Mr. Douth?
Yes.
Mrs. Perret? Mrs. Perret?
Yes.
Mrs. Schofield?
Yes.
Mr. Brooks?
No.
Mr. Lamoth?
Yes.
Mr. Gerard?
Yes.
Mr. Bernard?
Yes.
Mrs. Loebz?
Yes.
Dr. McCarthy?
Yes.
Mayor View?
Yes.
Ms. Russo?
Yes.
Eleven yes, one no.
Motion passes, I will entertain a motion from someone. Don, can I get a motion?
Motion to, between the Center of Martial Arts Fitness and the Chicopee School Committee to approve, and have the chairperson authorized to sign.
To have a motion to approve the memorandum of agreement between this, I'm sorry, the license agreement between the Center of Martial Arts and Fitness and the Chicopee School Committee. Any discussion or comments? We'll take a roll call.
Mayor View?
Yes.
Ms. Russo?
Yes.
Mr. Barcello?
Yes.
Mr. Douth?
No.
Mrs. Perret?
Yes.
Mrs. Schofield?
Yes.
Mr. Brooks?
No.
Mr. Lamoth?
Yes.
Mr. Gerard?
Yes.
Mr. Bernard?
Yes.
Mrs. Loebz?
Yes.
Dr. McCarthy?
Abstain.
Nine yes, two no, and one abstained.
Motion carries, twenty-five dash eight dash fifteen.
Move that the license agreements between Playful Minds and the Chicopee School Committee be approved and the chairperson be authorized to sign.
I think, David, you already did one, so I'm going to you, Don. Don, motion?
Motion to approve.
I have a motion to approve the license agreement between Playful Minds and this Chicopee School Committee. Any discussion or comments on the Playful Minds license agreement? Seeing none, we'll take a roll call.
Mr. Barcello?
Yes.
Mr. Douth?
No.
Mrs. Perret?
Yes.
Mrs. Schofield?
Yes.
Mr. Brooks?
No.
Mr. Lamoth?
Yes.
Mr. Gerard?
Yes.
Mr. Bernard?
Yes.
Mrs. Loebz?
Yes.
Dr. McCarthy?
Abstain.
Mayor View?
Yes.
Ms. Russo?
Yes, sorry.
Nine yes, two no, one abstained.
Motion carries, twenty-five dash eight dash sixteen.
Move that the license agreement between One Strong Community and the Chicopee School Committee be approved and the chairperson be authorized to sign.
Sunny, can I get a motion?
Motion? Jesus. Motion to approve.
So have a motion to approve the license agreement between One Strong Community and the Chicopee School Committee. Any discussion on the motion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Barcello?
Yes.
Mr. Douth?
No.
Mrs. Perret?
Yes.
Mrs. Schofield?
Yes.
Mr. Brooks?
No.
Mr. Lamoth?
Yes.
Mr. Gerard?
Yes.
Mr. Bernard?
Yes.
Mrs. Loebz?
Yes.
Dr. McCarthy?
Abstain.
Mayor View?
Yes.
Ms. Russo?
Yes.
Nine yes, two no, one abstained.
Motion carries, twenty-five dash eight dash seventeen.
Move that the license agreement between the YMCA of Greater Springfield and Chicopee School Committee be approved and that the chairperson be authorized to sign.
Dr. Mark McCarthy, could I get a motion?
Motion to approve.
I have a motion to approve the license agreement between the YMCA of Greater Springfield and the Chicopee School Committee. Any discussion or comments? Sandra Perret?
And again, the, the rate was, is based on what you previously stated about the capacity of the students for the program, and the sites within the building that were used. Okay, thank you. Yes, yes, she, yes, she shook her head, yes.
I was looking this way, sorry. Any further discussion or comments? Jay Douth?
So I just want to be clear, so that's based off, so, on this one, we're voting based off the capacity of the program, correct? That's what we were just told? Is that a yes?
Let's, I'll defer, I didn't-
It's based on enrollment, not capacity.
I, I thought Ms. Perret just asked if it was based off capacity, and we were just told yes, am I mistaken?
I'm, I thought she said the enrollment and the capacity of the building to hold it. It's based on the number of kids, and what space they've requested.
I have the floor still?
Yeah.
So I, I just want, I, I disagree, because-
Okay.
We're talking about how many people, and with One Strong, and I know Charlie personally, and I, with all of these programs, I said it when I started, and I don't want any of the rhetoric to be that I don't think we need, we need these programs desperately. But as the Chair of the Policy Subcommittee, we need to make sure that we don't put ourselves in a situation where we did before. And I, maybe I'm not understanding, but what I'm hearing is that One Strong, we did based off of how many students they have, not what their license is, and it doesn't sound like we're applying that across the board. Thank you.
Alsa?
Thank you, Mayor. I was just wondering if this would make sense to, instead of having it read license agreement, have it, like other departments in the city, call it a bid agreement, and actually send these out as an RFP, if we need these type of services in our schools, like we do with other work that needs to be done in the city, a bid gets, an RFP gets sent out, gets sent back, and then, it goes to whoever wants to bid the most money to the city, they get the, they get the, the contract. So I mean, I, I think that's pretty much what we have here, because no one's knocking at the door to have different things, but if we just change this to a bid agreement instead of a license agreement for future, would this, would that solve, that way there, if we needed a vendor, we could advertise that we need a certain vendor to create certain programs, they make a proposal to the city to bid on how much they want to, they think that that contract is worth, to provide that service, and if there's three or four of them, then they bid against each other. If there's one bidder, they get it for whatever they bid, and then we'll have unity and transparency moving forward. But that's just my motion I'd like to make on the floor tonight.
We have a motion to approve first. So we have a motion to approve this?
Yep.
Okay. So they can conduct business when school starts, so that's the goal?
Yes.
I think, okay. So you want to make a motion to go out, I think, I'd rather, I'd prefer that we refer that to the Law Department to see if that's the process that we're supposed to be following. It's my understanding we came up with license agreement because the third parties approached the city and say, we want to use your space?
Yep.
So we weren't looking to, to provide that as a service, they provide it, not us? Correct me if I'm wrong, Superintendent, you have a doctorate in it, in after-school stuff versus what I have, but my understanding is that-
I think just for transparency, that, you know, some members of the board would like to see it put out there so that it can be equal, equal rights, equal, in the way we're doing it here, it doesn't seem like we can, we could have it equally known to anybody possibly interested in providing these services, and I think that's what, I think that's what...
I think we could ask the Law Department to review that.
Yeah, so I can make a motion after that we look into this with the Law Department, and we'll get a report back at a different time.
Now, we don't need, we can do that, we can look into it, we don't need to make a motion to do that.
Okay.
Okay?
Very good.
All right. So about getting back to the license agreement for the YMCA of Greater Springfield, Sandra Perret.
The license agreement that is made with each entity is revisited every year, correct?
Correct.
And it's adjusted based on whatever the presentation is and their specific requests for their license.
And the state, because they get their approvals from the state, correct? Through the early EEC.
Okay. So it doesn't stay the same per year, year after year.
So just a point of information, going all the way back, I think the intent was to make this a uniform process was the goal that the Superintendent tasked the team with, and that was the goal. And obviously, that information, or there's an uncomfort level with some of that, that process that he's implemented, but the goal was to create a process that was uniform, transparent, and fair for everyone who's interested in providing after-school or summer programs here in our district. That's the goal. Next up, Don Lamoth, and then you.
Yeah, I think the biggest rub that's, that I feel is going on tonight is that when martial arts came in and said their rent was going to be $200,000, there was a major increase from 70 or 65 to 200, and everybody went, what the hell is going on? That's what really happened. So now, there's some negotiation that went on, and it's down to 70. And now we're, we had a sliding scale for all the rest of these, and they pretty much worked. If we were to go out for bid and say, we'll take whatever they offer us, that 70 could become 10 grand. So you gotta be careful where you go with this, we want to have some control over it. But the motion on the floor, I would vote for this tonight.
Don has the floor.
Oh, sorry.
The motion on the floor tonight, I would vote for this.
We're voting on the motion on the floor, we're not talking about going out to bid, we have a license agreement with the YMCA of Greater Springfield, that's what we're voting on tonight. We're not talking about anything other, that was a suggestion from a member of the school committee that we will investigate and look into. Grace Scofield.
I have, well, I agree with everything Jay has said, I also agree that, you know, we are in need of these programs, and I voted yes because I wanted them to begin in September, but Sandra brought up a really great point, we revisit them every year. I have a question with regard to the facilities, do we charge different rates depending on which school it's at? Because different schools have different facility, you know, like things to offer, you know, the quality of, like size of the gyms and stuff like that. So it's, is it uniform for every school?
Yes.
Okay. Thanks, I just wanted to, I just, I want to see programs begin this, but I also want it revisited every year in transparent formula.
I agree with you, that's what I want, too. Thank you. Anyone else? Sure, Jay.
I'm just struggling to understand how we can have a transparent formula when the, this board who has to vote on these can't even get the formula before we vote. If we're saying we want this to be uniform and transparent to the public, to the vendors, it's not transparent to, I won't speak for the board, it's not transparent to me this evening, how we arrived at these numbers, and so I don't, I just don't know how we can say that we're putting our best effort to be uniform and transparent. Again, I know these programs are necessary, I know what it means for parents if these programs don't start on day one, I get it, but as the policy chair, we, we'd like, that, the martial arts should have been being charged more money. This, we lost out on money, we talk about finances, we lost out on money last year because we didn't have accurate ways for them to report their numbers or their attendance, the numbers jumped because they had a lot more kids than they said they did. That's what I, the information that I was given. So I'm just trying to make sure we don't end up in another situation a year from now. This is a brand-new thing that we're kind of coming up, these agreements that never existed before, I don't think it's unreasonable for us to ask for the formula prior to voting on it, but...
Jay, I respectfully, completely agree with you. If you would have asked for it when you got the agreement on Friday or your packet, you would, we could have, they could have provided it, not me, they could have provided that for you. You asked for it on the fly on the floor, I didn't know that you, if they knew you wanted it, I'm sure they would have given it to you.
If I may, Mayor, at Policy Subcommittee, I questioned how we got to this, and we were told that it was going to be presented to us at the school committee meeting this evening.
That's not something I was purview to, so...
As the policy chair, that's, that's how I recall it happening.
Okay. All set? Are you all set?
Yes.
Deanna.
If I were one of these businesses listening to this conversation, I might question some of the pricing I'm getting in these agreements here today, just with some of the back and forth, so just was curious, and I'm hoping the answer is yes, but when we get these rates, they will be able to use, it will be standard, and they'll be able to recalculate and back into the rate that they've been provided within these agreements in this table that it sounds like exists.
I didn't create the agreements, I'm not...
For Dr. Ware.
Oh, defer to Dr. Ware.
So what I assume is that there is a conversation between Ms. Cruiser's department, Attorney Bouchard, and the vendor, so what, and to answer your question, because I'm trying to be linear, I just want to make clear, I think they, there are, it sounds like we need to go back and revisit some things, I'm not ignoring that, I also want to be very clear that I think this was a valiant attempt to get to this, because before I got here, it was a negotiation between people who were before me and whatever the school committee signed off on. That's the way I understand it. So what I see happening right now is that there was information that was requested or said those can be supplied for this evening, and I take responsibility for that. And then for, to answer your question, I know that when there's communication between the vendor, the vendors do express what they, like they think, even with the formula, so that conversation starts and stops in the student support's office as well as Attorney Bouchard, and I don't know if they have anything to add to that.
So a couple, just a point, a couple points of information, these agreements have always existed for 20-something years, this is a new structure for the agreements, it is based on the sigh, the number of students participating in the program. So if you have from 1 to 10 students, there's a rate, if you have from 11 to 20 students, there's a rate, if you have from 21 to 30 students, there's a rate, and so on, up to whatever the top of the tier is. The reason that it was tiered in that way was to support fledgling programs that are trying to get off the ground by not giving them a heavy lift so that they could kind of get themselves going.
I think everyone understands that, Attorney Bouchard.
Well, I...
What Jay is upset about is, or questioning, not upset, questioning, is that he hadn't received the information.
And I apologize, I wasn't at the Policy Subcommittee meeting, I would have gladly supplied the information, it is available, I don't have it in a hard copy right now, but that is how we developed it, and the math is based on that, and we think it's fair and transparent, it's applied based on how many kids do you have participating? Because a lot of the kids in these programs are receiving vouchers for these programs that they're using, and that's what the entities who are running the programs are counting on, so they're saying, hey, we're going to have 10 to 11, we're going to have 15 to 20, you know, they've been doing this for 15, 20 years, they know who their families are, how many kids they're going to have, and so on and so forth. The other piece that I added to that is the idea that they are also monitored and licensed by EEC, and so caps on their programs are set by EEC, not by us. We don't license them, we don't supervise them, that's between them and EEC.
And we had, and so when we were talking at the Policy Subcommittee, we were talking also about the fact that we were not changing the policy. The policy that's in there is for people who rent something on a one-time basis, so we're not changing the policy, these lease agreements are completely separate, license agreements are completely separate, we didn't change the policy, so that if you want to come and rent out for your dance recital or the park and recs, that goes by what the policy is, what the policy states. We do, like you said, have the sliding scale that we can provide to you, but I also did have meetings playing phone tag with YMCA, but I did have preliminary meetings with One Strong Community, Ken, and Playful Minds to discuss this scale and to be completely transparent and to look at their numbers.
We have a motion to approve the license agreement between the YMCA of Greater Springfield. Any other further discussion or comments? We'll take a roll call, please.
Mr. Douth?
No.
Mrs. Parrott?
Yes.
Mrs. Scofield?
Yes.
Mr. Brooks?
No.
Mr. Lamoth?
Yes.
Mr. Gerard?
Yes.
Mr. Bernard?
Yes.
Mrs. Loebz?
Yes.
Dr. McCarthy?
Abstain.
Mayor View?
Yes.
Ms. Russo?
Yes.
Eight yes, 2 no, 1 abstained.
Motion carries, one out of chair, correct?
One left.
I believe one absent.
I think he's out of chair. So we could just recognize that he was out of chair.
Yes, coach, still here.
Motion carries, 25-8-18.
Move that the employee handbook be approved.
Susan, can I get a motion?
Motion to approve.
I have a motion to approve the employee handbook. Any discussion or comments? Anyone? We have a motion to approve the employee handbook, all in favor, anyone opposed? Seeing none, motion passes unanimously. We already took 25-8-20, I'll entertain a motion.
No, 25-8-19.
Oh, I'm sorry, 25-8-19.
2025 MASC, MASSS Annual Conference, November 12 through 14, 2025, Hyannis, Massachusetts, asterix, two school committee members have indicated interest in attending.
Deanna.
We have a budget line, right, so do we have to approve?
What's the question? I'm sorry, can't hear you.
I guess, are we trying to approve something? We have a budget line, so I just was trying to understand what needed to happen next.
I asked that last time.
Oh, okay.
Same question. Dr. Ware.
From what I understand is, there is a budget line that has other funds in it, and it's the committee's vote to approve how many people will be in attendance.
So is two within the means of the budget line?
Correct, yes.
It is? Okay.
I see Mr. Myoreki said he said yes.
Okay, so we're good, all right.
Dr. McCarthy.
Just, I believe we're trying to register the early bird rate is the idea, and so my question perhaps for Sarah of the office, do we know if you have to assign the names in registration, or can we just say two representatives from Chickapi?
I have to register individuals, I'm not sure if they can be swapped out at some point, I probably can do that, but I do have to start with registering individuals.
Just a point of information, I think there's a level of uncertainty with the school committee with our election cycle here in the city of Chickapi, so I don't think that it's in our best interest to have two people sign up that could potentially have a race, and I'm not sure if that's the case or not, I don't know who they are, but it might be in our best interest to wait till after the election to allow people to sign up, it might be too late? Is that too late? So there's some real uniqueness, Dr. Ware, to our situation.
So what I, what I can do is if, since we don't have the answer to that question, so if two individuals signed up, and then let's say after the race, which the conference is after the race, right? Because the conference is November, I actually will work on getting that answer to see if we can swap out different people, and I can provide that information to, to the committee so that you know how to move.
Don.
I still have the floor.
Oh, yeah, you still have the floor, I interrupted you, go ahead, Dr. McCarthy.
Then, I would make a motion to postpone voting on this until we know whether individuals can be swapped out or not.
I'm sorry, I'm having a hard time hearing you, what?
I make a motion to postpone voting on how many members we would send until we know whether we can swap out members or not.
Okay, I think that the intent was to allow the capacity for two, not saying the two names, correct? Is what the intention was, that we have capacity in our budget, $5,000, to allow for two members to go, and we could vote on that, or, you have a motion to postpone? Did you make a motion?
I make a motion, I'm going to amend that emotion.
What's your motion?
My motion is to approve allowing two members to go.
Okay, so we have a motion to approve two members to go.
Up to two.
Up to two. Discussion on that motion, Don.
Yes, I hear what you're saying about the uncertainty, so what if the only ones that get registered, I don't know who the two people are, so, just that being said, if the two people that are asked to go are unopposed, then go ahead and register them if we approve it tonight, because they're unopposed.
So they're not asked?
If they're opposed, then just register the person that's unopposed, and then you can always send the second person later at the less-than-early-bird rate.
Well, I think that the, we would leave it up to the school committee members at their discretion to say they're the ones who wanted to go, so the motion is to approve to allow two people to go. Not their names, not the person.
They don't even have to be early.
We have a motion, two slots to go, up to two, that's the motion.
Okay.